We're gonna call tonight's meeting to order. This is the April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Ormond Beach Regular City Commission Meeting. It's exactly seven P. M. And I hope you felt welcomed this evening by our Planning Director, Stephen Spraker, and Police Captain Chris Ruse, who were our greeters. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. While I do that, if you'd like to speak on any of the items on the agenda, please make sure you fill out a card and get it over to the first person I'm gonna introduce, who is our Recording Secretary, Taylor Lockhart. Next, we have City Clerk, Susan Daughters. Then our Commissioner from Zone One, Lori Talland.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Commissioner from Zone Two, Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Commissioner from Zone Three, Susan Persis.
Good evening, and welcome, everybody.
Our Deputy Mayor and Zone Four Commissioner, Harold Brierley.
Good evening, everyone.
City Manager, Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager, Claire Whitley. City Attorney, Randy Hayes. And then way to my left and way to your right, we have Police Chief Jesse Godfrey joining us this evening, and our Fire Chief, Howard Bailey. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones, and we will have the invocation given by the Pastor George Ward from the Emanuel Church of the Living God, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'll please rise for the invocation.
Our heavenly Father and our God, we're both thankful and grateful for your benevolence, your love, your grace, your protection and provision for each of us. We stop to thank you for life, for family, for love, for community, and for justice. We thank you for the opportunities and the mandate you've given our Ormond Beach City Commissioners, and how you have called them to build community of integrity, a community of love, and a community of trust. We ask your blessings on our city officials who have been called to lead the community in which we live, interact, work, serve, and play. Thank you, God, for our Honorable Mayor Bill Partington, our City Commissioners of Zone One, Two, Three, and Four. We thank you for our City Manager, Assistant City Manager, our City Clerk, our City Attorney, and everyone that is in this room at this time. Thank you, God, for every staff member, every official, department, and each board that serves our beautiful community. We ask for your wisdom, direction, guidance, as they strategically labor to build a better and a greater, a stronger Ormond Beach. We thank you for the vision, the mission, the goals, and the purpose that they have so executed so that we might enjoy our community. We pray, oh, God, as we invoke your presence upon this agenda, we pray that each resolution, each proclamation, each ordinances be executed with clarity, with understanding, in a spirit of unity, so that the good of our community might be perpetually accomplished. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Please be seated. After I call the meeting to order, I generally go right into the introductions and the pledge. But I wanted to just tell you, Pastor Ward, thank you for being here tonight. It's always so much nicer when a professional provides the invocation, and it adds a special touch. And then your group does so much good work in our community, so thank you for that as well. Next up, presentations and proclamations. Commissioner, I'm gonna go down and present this, and then we'll get a picture at the end behind us. But if Lieutenant John Borzner would come on up, and anybody he wants to bring with him. Whereas Lieutenant John Borzner began his career with the Ormond Beach Police Department on July tenth, two thousand and six, and is actively pursuing an associate's degree in criminal justice. Whereas Lieutenant Borzner recently graduated from the University of Louisville's Southern Police Institute's Ninety-First Command Officer Development Course held in Claremont, Florida. This five-month intensive program comprising of two-week intervals focuses on the development of leadership and professional skills. And whereas Lieutenant Borzner brings a wealth of experience from his seventeen-year tenure with the Ormond Beach Police Department, his background includes roles as patrol officer, traffic unit officer, patrol corporal, criminal investigations corporal, patrol sergeant, traffic unit sergeant, and supervisor of the Criminal Investigations Unit. And whereas John was recently promoted to the position of lieutenant in November, two thousand and twenty-two, and currently he proudly leads the Support Services Division. And John is dedicated to the law enforcement profession, sacrificing being away from home and family to enhance his knowledge, skills, and abilities. His exceptional work ethic and unwavering commitment to duty make him an accomplished, invaluable member of the Police Department, City, and Community. Based on all that, now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim today, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as a day to recognize Lieutenant John Borzner in the City of Ormond Beach, and urge all residents to join me in commending Lieutenant Borzner for his accomplishments and unwavering service to our city. And next, I'll ask Evelyn Rubastini to come up. She can bring up anybody she wants with her. This is a proclamation that we are proud to present to Evelyn for our National Crime Victims Rights Week. And I'll just tell you, I mean, the City of Ormond Beach is so lucky to have Evelyn and her volunteers. When a crime happens, there are impacts to victims, to residents, to our community that are not even comprehended by the average citizen. Evelyn tries to ameliorate those and help people as much as she can. There doesn't even have to be a crime committed. She's just always there and willing to help, which is, which is an incredible thing, so we're grateful for her. Whereas the victim rights movement has resulted in the passage of laws at the local, state, and federal levels that guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas incorporating communities' existing experts and trusted sources of support will develop a criminal justice system response that is truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. With the unwavering support of their communities, victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing their rights. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to recommit to listening to crime survivors in every space where decisions are made that could impact them. And whereas the City of Ormond Beach is hereby dedicated to strengthening victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in our communities and our victim responders, and working for a better future for all victims and survivors. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Ormond Beach, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim April twenty-third through twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in the City of Ormond Beach, reaffirming the city's commitment to creating a response that assists all crime victims and expresses appreciation for community members, service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving the response to all victims so they may find assistance, support, justice, and peace. Audience remarks. I have two cards, and we will start tonight with Ike Leary.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, and staff. Couple things. We got the towing dock up and running now, and that's a great thing. This weekend, we probably had ten to twenty boats tied up to it. People walk downtown to eat or do whatever. The second thing I would like to talk about is, is this email that everybody got about pre-visiting overnight dockage at Chez Le Park. First of all, I would love for it to happen, but I don't think we're gonna be able to enforce it. And also, there's a lot of liability there. You know, if I could be there twenty-four hours a day, it'd be a little bit different, but I can't. Okay? There was a quote in there about, uh... Hold on a minute. Oh, about the previous commission. I didn't appreciate that. That wasn't right. Apparently, they... I've been coming to these commission meetings for years, and I've never heard that hit the floor. Maybe it has, but it hasn't. Second of all, there was a quote in there that I'm willing to put cameras on my beach shop. The thing that I said was, if Ormond Beach chooses to put cameras out, they can tie into my system. Okay, I can't put cameras on my, my beach shop to, to look out there at the, the, the towing dock, at the boats and everything. And again, it's a good idea, but it's gonna be hard to enforce. Thank you.
Thank you, Ike. Next, we have Suzanne Shiber.
Hi, Suzanne Shiber, Ormond Beach resident. I'm here tonight to cover several environmental items, starting with Volusia Forever is accepting submissions for property owners for land conservation until May fifteenth. Another open application session will occur in the fall. The strongest advertising comes from word of mouth, and the commission and the city government are the strongest messengers. On another note, I now serve on the Indian River Lagoon Citizen Advisory Committee. I see the city as aware of the grant program by the IRL Small Grant Applications. Please keep in mind that projects such as restoration, stormwater, wastewater, and education can also be submitted during open requests for proposals related to the Halifax River. These happen twice a year, in the spring and the fall. Representing my own organization, Dream Green Volusia, over the course of the last year and a half, we've given storm drain label stencils to every city along the river for free. White paint used to line roads is used to paint over the stencil to label the storm drains. We understand the use of the emblems as markers, which the city has chosen already. These will be used for high visibility in high foot-traffic areas to educate the public concerning their role in clean water and the river. And I'm gonna give these at the end. In two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two, Volusia County launched an anti-litter campaign called Every Litter Bit Counts. We played an influential role in this endeavor. There are a series of videos online that the elected officials did with their P. I. O. concerning storm drains and damage of cigarette butts, illegal dumping, beach safety, Adopt-A-Road, and so much more. They purchased new garbage cans and recycle bins for the beach. They utilized jail inmates for roadside cleanups and placed trash cans at various Botran stops. The two hurricanes set the program back a bit, but county staff are gearing it back up. And in two thousand and twenty-two, six hundred pounds of trash was picked up on the Loop on International Cleanup Day. That was in one day. In two thousand and twenty-one, it was nine hundred pounds. One of the first things we did was ask Councilman Kent to film a new video for Adopt-A-Road on the Loop. We're asking you to consider joining the efforts of the county in an extended program or launching your own anti-litter campaign program. There's no magical line at the city or county borders when it comes to litter. County roads run through our city. It is about being initiative taken, taking through community and government working together for a cleaner environment. The Volusia Beautiful staff would be the first to tell you it was a surprising success. We have talked about this program in many cities over the course of the last two years, and it's been well-received. Lastly, we support the Regrow the Loop project, and we hope you do as well. We've ordered a new batch of signs and already begun giving them out. Thank you all for your time. Do you want me to give these to the clerk?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, I'm just gonna hold it up very quickly. There's two different sizes. They say Dump No Way, Strains to River. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, the minutes from the March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three minutes are up for approval. They've been sent to us for review, posted to the city's website as well. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
May I move approval of submitted?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign, and we'll show those being approved unanimously. Up next is the Consent Agenda. Does any Commissioner wish to pull any item off of the Consent Agenda?
I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland, yes. Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will move to... Well, now would be the appropriate time, if any Commissioner wanted to comment on any of the Consent Agenda items. Does anyone wish to... Commissioner Persis?
Yes, I just was very pleased on Item Seven A and Seven P. I'm very happy that we're gonna continue our participation in the Orlando Operations Center for Child Abduction Response Team. I think that's critical. And also, of the Memorandum of Understanding of the Sexual Predator Offenders Career Criminals, this will help make our area safe for residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent?
I'd just like to comment on the resolution, accepting the proposal for Royal Pest Services. I think we need to look at our bidding process possibly. The last, or this item only brought in two companies to respond, and none of them were from this area. Last meeting, we, um, we approved the bid for the new firearms, and that only brought in two companies as well that responded nationally. I just think the residents deserve to know that we are using the best program available to obtain goods and services. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we will go to Agenda Item Eight, Public Hearings. I will open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read Eight A, please.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-nine. An ordinance amending Paragraph C, Official Zoning Map of Section Two dash zero-one, established of Article One, Establishment of Zoning Districts and General Zoning Map of Chapter Two, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach. Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone two parcels of real property consisting of approximately nineteen point six-two acres located at thirty-six North Timber Creek Road, Volusia County Parcel Number four-one-two-five dash zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-two-two-one, and two-zero-one-one West Granada Boulevard, Volusia County Parcel Number four-one-two-five dash zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-two-four-three, from Volusia County R.C. Resource Corridor, Volusia County A dash two Agriculture, and Ormond Beach B dash eight Commercial, to planned business development authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of Ordinance Number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero-nine, read by title only.
Thank you. And Susan or Joyce, I'm just hearing a little edge on the...
I'm trying to get it right.
Thank you, yeah, somebody will take a look at that. And then I'll ask our Planning Director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, Planning Director. The items, the zoning map amendment and the issuance of development order will be covered together and then asked to be voted on separately. So there are two actions that are sought for the Timber Creek Apartments. The first is a zoning map amendment, and the second is the issuance of a development order. The property is located roughly at the corner of Timber Creek Road and West Granada Boulevard. The center section is the Timber Creek Apartments. To the north is Moss Point Subdivision. To the west is Indian Springs of Cocina Presbyterian Church. To the east is a vacant tract of commercial land and the Walgreens, which is existing. And then to the east is the Volusia County Stormwater Pond, and then single-family residential across Timber Creek. The property is unique. It has three separate zonings. So starting from the north, it has an open space conservation, residential office retail. Those two parcels were annexed into the city in two thousand and one. And then it has a general commercial land use of thirteen point two-two acres. So the land use density allows four hundred and seventy-one residential units and approximately four hundred and thirty thousand square feet of commercial. So the primary use of the property is a general commercial zoning district. The zoning amendment seeks to take the Volusia County zonings from the annexation parcel in the Ormond Beach B eight and go to the planned business development. The zoning map amendment itself doesn't approve any site plan or development order. It provides the framework for the next action, which is the development order. So when the planning board looked at this item, this was the site plan that was presented. There were ten buildings at three hundred units. In the staff recommendation, there was a recommendation to delete Building Eight, so the staff review was of two hundred and seventy units. The planning board recommended denial of the project with a five-to-zero vote in December of last year, and the applicant has been working on a redesign which was included in your packet. So walking around the site, the changes on the text are, are yellow, what has changed? So they've gone from three hundred units to two hundred and seventy units. That brought the density down to sixteen point four-four units an acre. They have reduced the number of buildings to eight and increased the size of Building Three, Four, and Eight. So they made the buildings longer, but made less buildings. They've kept the only access off the Timber Creek because it's emergency access, so only police and fire vehicles would be able to access that road, with the primary access coming off West Granada Boulevard. The project has submitted multiple traffic studies. They have a Department of Transportation permit. They've been reviewed by a city-employed independent traffic expert and determined acceptable. And the residential use allows a greater, a less trip generation than if it were a commercial parcel. The project has been approved by the St. John's Rural Water Management District for both their stormwater and wetlands permit. They're preserving the seven historic trees on site. Our land development code requires fifteen percent of the site be preserved as natural. The project is at twenty-seven point eight percent, or five point four-four acres, with the latest design. In essence, they shifted the building and the site away from Indian Springs to gain additional setback in landscaped areas. So the landscape buffers on both Indian Springs and Moss Point have been exceeded from our land development code. There are a minor one-point, or point one-four acre wetland impact, which is a six percent wetland impact. So why is it going through this process? Is a question I get asked a lot. One is the density. So the land use allows a density of four hundred and seventy-one units, and the zoning allows a hundred and sixty-four. And that, that is a policy choice that's in our land development code. So, you know, the commission back in two thousand and nine said, the Site Plan Review Committee, you can review up to ten units per acre. But anything greater than that needs to go through this public hearing process, neighborhood meeting, planning board, commission. And then it's reviewed based on the criteria that was in your staff report. So that's the first threshold they're going for. The second is building height. The B-eight zoning district allows a building height of thirty feet. The planned business development allows a forty-five-foot height. It's not a variance, it's something that's allowed through the planned development process. The midpoint of their, their roof line is thirty-nine point five. And then the last item is the building length. As stated earlier, Buildings Three, Four, and Ten have increased building lengths. Anything over a hundred and eighty linear feet requires to go through the public hearing process. There's no criteria to tell you good, bad, or indifferent, it's just that you have to go through this public hearing process. The applicant has provided in the packet their public benefits, which include natural preservation, increasing the landscape buffers along the perimeters, increasing the building setbacks, restricting the access onto Timber Creek to emergency access only, and the additional plantings they're doing along Indian Springs. We have received, over the life of this project, a number of emails which are included in your packet, the concerns and some of the same concerns the planning board expressed, where the traffic that the use was incompatible to the surrounding properties, the density, this is overdevelopment, site design, and quality of life. The planning board, or the city commission, has three options in front of them. They can either approve at two hundred and seventy units, they can approve with conditions, and that is basically any, any range between one sixty-four and two seventy, or they could deny the project as submitted. The planning board did recommend a denial of the project by a five-to-zero vote. It was not this site design, but it was the same number of units. The applicant is here to address the commission, and I'm available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. And we will have Mark Watts, I believe, on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I had to sprint up here. I got here about the time your gavel dropped, and from Port Orange, so I've been out of breath today, so I apologize. But I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening and be here on behalf of VCP, VCP Properties, VCP Development, sorry, I'm drawing, drawing a blank on the, on the actual ownership name. Garrison McMillan, who's representative with Tellis Partners, the owner of the property, is here, as is Harry Newkirk, who's the, the project engineer, in case we need to pull them up for any questions. But I want to, first of all, thank you for, for the time that you, you've given us. We asked you, we were here in January, you know, as you know, following the, the December Planning Board meeting, and I think the good thing was, we were still in conversation. And so I'm gonna walk through, you know, the, you know, not the staff report, but some of the other things that we've been working on. I think Stephen and, and his department have done a really good job of outlining how this complies with your comprehensive plan, how it complies with the plans for this part of the city and the, and the future development. But I want to walk through just some of the other elements here, really what we've been working on. So, quick summary, we're, we're here to, to consider rezoning the property. We've got an interesting mix, you know, of zonings on the property. We have city land use on all of it, but we do have the lingering county zoning on the north, a few acres. But overall, we're, we're asking for the approval of a PBD rezoning and the development agreement, or development order that will authorize the development of up to two hundred and seventy units. This was really kind of summarized in, in what Steve already went through, so I'll, I'll skip through this. But, you know, the main point of, of putting this up is to, to highlight that you, you really do have a lot of uses that are currently allowed on this property. If you recall, I know the best example that I've heard repeatedly through this process is, well, this is where Target was gonna go. Target was gonna go on this property at one point in time, and that's the type of use and intensity that is permitted by the B-eight zoning. It's permitted there by right today. It's permitted there by right today. And it generates a whole lot more traffic and other things that, that people have expressed concern about through the course of this. So this is the plan that we had in December when we were presenting to planning board. And, you know, this plan in and of itself was the result of several months of discussion with some of the surrounding property owners and primarily with the Indian Springs neighborhood, which is immediately to the west along the entire western boundary of the site. And, and, you know, we, we went into planning board with the recommendation of approval just from a policy standpoint. It meets the conditions and terms in your comprehensive plan and I think makes sense from a, from a policy standpoint to locate here and provide that, you know, kind of housing alternatives within, within Ormond. So at the planning board, we reduced the density to two hundred and seventy-six units by eliminating the building eight, which Steve referenced in his staff report. We had taken a lot of effort and, and taken great pains to try and maximize a lot of our buffering and, and tree preservation, you know, prior to, to that point in time. But we've, we've gone back and, and spent a lot of time since, planning board, and actually since your continuance in January, really focused on that. Just before our meeting with you was scheduled to, to happen, and I think it was January twenty-fourth, if I remember correctly, we sat in one of the conference rooms here at City Hall with some of the other representatives from the surrounding neighborhoods. And this was our markup. You know, we, we sat down and said, you know, we, we like the idea of working with someone we know. We know that your, your clients are the owners of the property. Let's see if we can, you know, continue working on the adjustments to the plan to get to a point where, you know, we, we can be agreeable on, on the overall plan. And so this was our list of about seven things that, that we left that meeting. We came in here and asked for a continuance, left that meeting, and, and went forward to try and see if we could work on these revisions. So, you know, just a, a real kind of quick overview of that. It was the elimination of building eight, which we'd already confirmed. Working to see if we could shift the remaining buildings to pull them further away from the adjoining residential neighborhoods. Establishing, you know, that the, the minimum distance from Indian Springs would be, you know, kind of the end of prior building nine, which I believe was this building up here. So trying to get at least that far away with the overall development footprint. Eliminating balconies on any of those buildings that were the closest to the adjoining single-family neighborhood. Maintaining the full planting that we had agreed to add planting in to supplement, you know, the, the natural vegetative buffer that was being preserved. And then, you know, adding in, let's see, the additional screening plantings along the, the retaining wall adjacent to the, to the driveway. And then we're looking at the, the elevation of the screen wall at that point in time slightly higher. That one, we actually ended up not doing just because it, it, we were, we were primarily using that screen wall to block headlights from shining into the adjacent neighborhood, whether it was six or eight feet. It didn't, it really blocked them sufficiently at that height. So this is the updated plan that you saw just a minute ago in your, in your presentation packet. And I've got to thank Harry, because he gave us an exhibit that, I think when we all saw this plan initially, our initial, our immediate reaction was, well, I'm not really sure how much this changed things. But when you look at what it actually did, and this one shows it a little bit better, when you look at how it changed really that northwest corner, that northwest corner where we were closest to the residential neighborhood there, to the west, it shifts it back substantially. In fact, when you, when you look at, you know, it's really, I applaud any of you that was able to read the numbers that were on the plan sheets in your materials, so I tried to, to go through and make sure I had it. You know, our minimum buffer, you know, along this western edge in the prior plan was a hundred and forty feet. And we were able to increase the buffers and the setbacks to two, a minimum of two hundred and twenty-five feet to shift everything further to the east in order to provide that, that additional screening. We've got the precast wall, we've, we've removed the balconies and eliminated the, you know, kind of the, the potential for people to look out from the end of those buildings into the adjacent neighborhood. Reduced the overall building count by two. We do have some larger overall buildings, but we were able to reduce the number of buildings on the site and then reduce the unit count a little bit further to two hundred and seventy units. So again, that's the, the overall comparison of the footprint. Architecture remained the same. One of the things that we've talked about kind of through the process here is this property is allowed, is permitted to, to develop with multifamily now. And the question is really, at what level of fit and finish, at what quality? You know, what type of project can you, can you develop here? And you can build it in a hundred and sixty, sixty-four units. You can't build the same, you know, Class A style of an apartment complex, but you can get a basic apartment complex in. With the additional units, you're able to do more. And, and I think the history and, and the track record that Tellis Partners has as a developer is their focus is on building the high end of, you know, in every community. They've developed over five thousand units, they've got, gosh, almost, I think, you know, close to that number again in development now with the various projects that are either under, getting ready for construction or in, in pre-permitting. But their focus is on high-quality architecture, high-quality fit and finish, resort-style amenities. The place that, you know, I think our, we want our kids to come back to town, you know, after college. I just moved my, my oldest daughter to, to Washington or to the DC area, you know, for her first post, you know, college job. And looking at the options out there, I really wanted her to be in a place, you know, that was one of the, on the nicer end of, of, you know, the available, you know, projects there versus something that was not as nice. So I think that's what, you know, the, the plan before you really helps us to be able to achieve. Now, we did go back as part of the discussions with the neighborhood. We reduced our building heights and we didn't, you know, we redesigned the pitch of the roof. We redesigned what the architecture looked like so that we could bring that down slightly. One of the concerns we heard from Indian Springs in particular, when you get to the eastern end of their cul-de-sac, particularly in like the winter months, you'd be able to see through and see, you know, these taller buildings. And so we went back and redesigned and, and were able to bring it down some. Now this, we, we didn't actually update the, the geometry on this, but, you know, picture, you know, if you put this on a piece of silly putty and stretched it out a little bit. This is the exhibit that we prepared to kind of show what the buffers and the other landscaping that are part of our proposal do with regard to buffering. Now this was originally showing the hundred and forty-five foot minimum, you know, separation. And the additional plantings along the property line, all of the existing trees that were being preserved, the screening, the, the retaining wall with the screening wall on top, the additional landscaping behind that. So we have layers of protection, layers of, you know, preservation of site to provide buffering. And this is what we've got specified on day one. As time progresses, all of the buffering and all the landscaping, you know, continues to grow up and continues to provide more of a, of a barrier there. So, you know, I think that's a substantially, you know, higher amount of, of buffering and landscaping than you are required under the code. By a factor of, gosh, I think we're almost at ten times the required minimum buffer that your code has here. So, you know, I think we've, we've really tried to, to focus on that based on our conversations. And I think I may have shown some of you these pictures before, but this was at the prior location of the closest buildings, so at the hundred and forty-two or hundred and forty-five feet. Looking back from the location of those buildings back through that preservation area towards Indian Springs, that's the amount of vegetation. Now we've gone, you know, about eighty feet further to the, to the east and maintained all that additional vegetation as well. So this is just kind of a, a quick summary of, of the various changes that we've made through the lifetime of the project over about a year, year and a half time period. We've restricted the traffic on Timber Creek Road in response to comments and concerns about that additional traffic. We've added all of the, the additional setbacks and buffering and screening, multiple layers of screening, the masonry wall, walls surrounding the, and fencing surrounding the entire development, reduced the building heights. We've looked at other access strategies. We actually at various times have looked at the possibility of shifting access to the west further so that we could line up with the, the school site on the south side of forty. So, you know, I, I think I've, I've got to applaud both your staff and the neighbors that have talked with us and, and our client for, you know, kind of being there in all these conversations. You know, if you look at your staff report, you know, I think there's a whole lot of reasons to support this. We're almost double your tree preservation requirement. We're, we're preserving every one of the historic trees on the site. We're actually at less than half of the maximum density on the overall site. If you look at what your comprehensive plan will allow here, what the zoning would allow, we're actually coming in just below the midpoint of those. I think it would be about three hundred and eighteen units if you were just looking at, you know, what the increase could be from the, the maximum the zoning currently allows to the maximum the land use allows. But here's, here's one thing, and I, and I, I'll be honest, I, I hesitated a little bit to put this in here because I don't want this to come across as anything other than, I, I'm a huge fan of home rule. I think we deserve in our communities to make our own rules here for what happens here. There are some legislative changes that have been made this year. One of the changes that you've heard about, it was signed into law by Governor DeSantis at the end of March, is the Live Local Act. It's the act the legislature has adopted to deal with affordable housing. And if you've had an opportunity, I know you've probably gotten some briefings on it, Senate Bill one oh two, one of the things that it says is, if you are in a community that ha, and you have property that's zoned commercial, industrial or mixed use, and you have a project that's proposed that includes affordable housing on a minimum of forty percent affordable housing, it must be approved. There's not a, there's not a question, it doesn't go to a hearing. It has to be approved. And it has to be approved at the max, the density is set at the maximum density that the local government has in its zoning code, which I think here is thirty-two units an acre. And the maximum height is the maximum height within a one-mile radius of that site. I think the proposal in front of us here tonight, in front of you tonight, this is, you know, something that's a result of a lot of commitments that we've made in our discussions with the neighborhood. If you look at what that could look like, this is, you know, just kind of a very quick layout that we put together based on, you know, where could that maximum take you? Five hundred and twenty-five units, five stories. I think you'd have a whole lot of problems fitting that there. And you still have things like concurrency and everything else that are there. So, so there is, you know, still those local controls. But I do want to just mention that I think here tonight, we have the opportunity to move forward with a plan that has been based on all of the discussion and input that we've committed to with the community. And so I'd, I'd hope that you'll support it. We're here to answer any questions that you, you might have. And I will stop talking there and go back to where we are with our plan.
Thank you, Mark. And we will move to cards, first up to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, yep. It's Donna Owens.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. I appreciate your allowing me the time to speak tonight. I am a resident of the Timber Creek Housing Project Association that's just down the road from this. Relatively new to the area, just a few years. But having driven Granada and Timber Creek every day since I've been here and watched the increase in traffic and density, I have a real concern for this. I know there's been studies. I don't know how they look at that. But I can tell you that my understanding of this project is that the ingress and egress for this is basically the Walgreens roadway behind Walgreens. Granada on Going West is very busy at any time of the day. There's one traffic light at that corner. Where this area would be that the residents would come in and out of, it's not, it's too close to put any kind of other traffic signal. So the plan is for people to come out behind Walgreens, cross over two lanes of Granada, into a U-turn lane, and then U-turn in front of the church and school. However, my understanding also, and I don't think it was addressed in the no longer having access to Timber Creek, is that they could also come out and cut through the Walgreens parking lot to Timber Creek. And again, most people that are going, they're going east on Granada. They're going to turn left, which means they have to go over two lanes of traffic and then get into the two turn lanes, which are backed up at all times, especially during rush hour. In the morning, people going to work, people coming home, school times, things like that. So I'm very concerned that there's such an increase of potential accidents and problems because of the density in this, with this apartment complex. And it will, no doubt that if there, I didn't know about the Target, it was probably before I was here, that certainly would have increased traffic, but I'm guessing they probably had their own way or some other way to get in and out of the proposed site. There's schools in that area, this whole area is a single-family residential area. There are apartment complexes nearby and some to still be built. So I'm not quite sure the, the benefit of this to the people in the area. There's the theater on Williamson, I believe, is also being developed for multiple use. And the planning board has denied this project. So I'm confused as to why it's in front of the commission, I guess it's the process. But you would think that the planning board would have the best interests of city, of the City of Ormond Beach in mind when they choose to approve or deny. That's all I have, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Donna. Next up is Richard Weasey. Weiss.
Okay. The builder is entitled to build ten units per acre on the land as it was zoned for this number. This allows for a hundred and sixty-four units. This is what they got, they're asking for an exception. Building more than this would require an exception to the current zoning and will result in a major impact on the residents. I'm not objecting to their building, it's an exception, I'm objecting to the reasons. The planning committee voted five to zero against allowing the exception to the current building. Number two, most of us move to live here to live in a small community and avoid the high population densities of the larger cities. Bringing in large numbers of new residents in Ormond Beach will undermine this and is supported primarily by the few who will make profit and opposed by the vast majority who want to live in a more open space. Allowing this to happen is not planning but acquiescence. The residents with very few exceptions are opposed to this. Always remember, it's an investment we're talking about. The animals cannot speak for themselves, yet they gift us with her presence. I do not see deer, turkey, turtles, and the myriad of other species in our large cities. Let us avoid this becoming our legacy. Traffic I don't have to speak to, it's a disaster, I drive it every day. I sometimes drive behind the buildings to get to my workplace. Most importantly, the thing I understand best is this. I am a hematologist and oncologist and have practiced for thirty-seven years in this area. Our emergency rooms are filled, hospital beds are not always available, and access to physicians in a timely manner is increasingly difficult. This is not just an inconvenience, but can be life-threatening. When you are ill and try to find a primary care physician or seek the help of a specialist, time is of paramount importance. You do not want to be told there are no openings for weeks or months. It is dangerous to allow our population to outgrow our medical infrastructure. For all our safe, for all our safety, the growth in the population must be measured, thoughtful, and in proportion with infrastructure. Anything less than this puts it all at risk. And if the numbers aren't right, you cannot protect yourself, because I've lived this every day. And I try to find rooms for people in hospitals and try to get people moved through emergency rooms and to see doctors to save their lives, and that's just a fact of numbers. This is a good time to take a stance. We do not have to reinvent the failures that have plagued our larger cities along the coast. Growth needs to be managed, the citizens need to be heard, and the resounding and unanimous vote by the planning committee against the exemption must be codified. Thank you, guys, thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And then Mile Lambert. Says Mile. Oh, sorry, I'm being told it's Mike, it's spelled Mile.
My name is Mike Lambert, I live at twenty Moss Point. Born and raised in Daytona Beach, lived at Moss Point for thirty-three years. My wife and I built our house there and raised our three children there, and our grandchildren are coming over there now. At the planning board meeting, Mr. Spraker, as he did today with you all, said that your choice is to either accept it, accept it with conditions, or deny it. At the planning board meeting, the city had recommended that, or not the city, Mr. Spraker, had recommended that it be approved if they would remove building number eight. Building number eight had thirty-six units in it. Building number eight had thirty-six units in it. At that meeting, Mr. Watts indicated that they would be amenable to doing something like that. So that was provided to the planning board as well. So that they could, they could either accept that amendment or they could even lower it if they wanted to, but they rejected it completely. The, after a five-zero vote, I felt very uncomfortable. So I, I decided to just do a little research and look into the, the people that are involved in this. And the, so I went to the website for the Varden, Varden Capital Properties Development. And on their website, they indicate that they are, there's an Ormond Beach project that's coming soon, that they're developing a new multi-family project in Ormond Beach. The total project will consist of three hundred units, and then there they're soliciting investors. I then went to the Telus website, and Telus regurgitated the exact same thing, that they're building a multi-family unit there with three hundred units. I then went to the Buckhaven, which is the builders, and they indicated that they're building a multi-family development there with three hundred units. Also soliciting investors, even though they are a private corporation. I then went and looked at the conceptual cost that was provided by Buckhaven, and it was twenty million dollars. I then looked at the, what was done, a non-competitive something. But i- in there, that was thirty-two million dollars, and there would be a thirty-two million dollar shortfall. You all are sitting in seats temporarily, but your decisions are going to live here forever. So I ask you to really consider, as did the planning board, to deny both of these requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Cooper.
Good evening. The density of this project, our property, should not be increased. Consider what is best for the residents of Ormond Beach, especially west of I- ninety-five. If the area allows for one hundred and sixty-four units now, then why would an increase be of any value to the residents of Ormond Beach? Density has been discussed many times at the Ormond Beach Life Engagement Meetings, and is something few people have ever desired. The owner property knew what the Ormond Beach zoning is for the, excuse me, is for the area. There should be no expectations that the number of units and/or density should be approved. There are defined established neighborhoods in the area. Residents bought their homes knowing of the present zoning of the property in question. They did not expect that a developer would ever want to increase the di- the density more than seventy-five percent that they want now, the allowed units. And that is certainly would not be approved by the commissioners. Ingress and egress for the proposed apartments are the same for Walgreens or for Route Forty. When people leave this area, they go west onto Route Forty. Then they need to make a U-turn onto, into Ormond Beach. And then where I- ninety-five, they must make a U-turn on Route Forty, approximately one-tenth of a mile from Walgreens. The U-turn is in front of River Bend Academy, which has approximately three hundred and ten students. With the continuing increase in traffic, it makes no sense to knowingly create more traffic congestion. There are traffic issues with Timber Creek Road to I- ninety-five. A study by FDOT recognized the need for another traffic light. The present design for Route Forty is not prepared for this increase of density. Although there is no proposed ingress or egress onto Timber Creek, they can go through Walgreens parking lot to use Walgreens ingress and egress. That is planning at its worst. They can, they can exit onto Timber Creek through the parking lot. I believe Ormond Beach can and should do better than to improve more density, greater traffic congestion, and loss of home values near the area. Requests do not always have to be approved. When in good conscience, it is in the best interest of Ormond Beach and of residents in the area not to approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Safi Resta? Or Safi? Safi Resta. Troy Railsback will be on next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I live in Timber Creek, and I am concerned, like the majority, with the traffic, the density. I get up to go to work between seven and nine, and always traffic from Timber Creek down to Forty. There's a line. There's two lanes. They're always full. There's people trying to come over from Walgreens at times that will dive in between you and almost cause accidents. Concerned with the water. I've heard rumors, don't know if these are true, this is hearsay, that we're having a problem with water already, and now we're going to put more stress on the area for water? For sewer, for garbage, for just, I mean, it's, it's too much. I don't understand the necessity or the need for this, how it's going to, you know, help us or what the benefit of bringing in an apartment of this level. We bought into the area, it was a single-family home, community, small. Everyone knows everybody kind of thing, and even with the other developments like Hunter Ridge and down further, it's still homes. They're not apartments. They're not condos. It's, it's not like beachside, and I, I would really like to keep it that way. So there's a lot of concerns going into this, what they call the BPD or whatever that is. My understanding was that was to allow them to expand. I don't understand the reason to expand and make more than what they had originally asked for. And the traffic, again, I can't say it enough, is gonna be horrendous. Trying to go down Forty now at any time of day, where in the eighties and nineties was nothing. Now you got a thirty-minute drive just to get down to Nova. You can sometimes have a forty-five-minute drive because of all the kids coming out of school. Now we're going to have children that are going to be living in the apartments with their families. Nothing wrong with that, but where are these children going to go to school? Where are they going to go to daycare? Who's going to help with Advent being overwhelmed with more patient care? We don't have the room for that. We're already struggling in the ER with that. I mean, the wait times are hours sometimes. And you can have patients that legitimately are having, you know, chest pain or other things, and they're being left there. And we're like, where, where are we going to put them? There's no room. So I just, I really hope that everyone really takes into consideration everything that is being impacted with what they're bringing into our area. And these developers, I don't believe, live here. If they're out of state, why do they want to be here? So what's so great? We, we don't want them here. Pardon the expression. I hate to say that, but we want to keep it a small, single-family community. That's, that's what we want.
Thank you. Troy Railsback, just dashing in at the correct moment to make his presentation, followed by Michael Gentry.
Good evening. Troy Railsback, Twenty Seven Indian Springs Drive. I'm also serving as the Indian Springs of Ormond HOA president, and so I'm speaking on behalf of the association as well. I would like to make the following statement. Indian Springs of Ormond has participated in the evolution of this proposed project and expressed concerns regarding its impact to the overall, overall area as well as its specific impact to the Indian Springs of Ormond HOA properties and residents due to its adjacent proximity on the northwest side of the proposed Timber Creek Apartments site to Indian Springs. There was a previous letter submitted by the HOA as part of the December twenty-twenty-two planning board meeting, along with multiple property owners speaking, including myself as the HOA president. Hopefully you had a chance to review all those previously presented comments. And I'll read our most recent formal position of the Indian Springs of Ormond Beach. The formal position of the HOA is that the association, in working with the property owner and the development team, is supporting the current iteration of the plan and building count, building placement that specifically includes shifting of the placement of the planned buildings as much as possible from the northwest corner of the Timber Creek Apartments site away from our Indian Springs, Indian Springs properties. Six-foot wall on the west side of the Timber Creek Apartments site along the agreed segment adjacent to Indian Springs properties. At parking lot grade to block vehicle lights. Perimeter fencing or wall where appropriate around the entire site. And then elimination of balconies overlooking our Indian Springs residences. So building on that, I will say that the development team, Mark Watts, Garrison, has been very receptive to our input. They have made adjustments. We, I will say that they've been, they've worked hand-in-hand with us in our concerns and issues. The initial letter did address some of the stuff that you guys have hea- heard tonight. And the original position of, of me personally, the association as well, is the decision that the commission makes is probably something that will set a precedent as far as apartment type, multifamily in the future. We just want you to be very careful with that. But we have worked with the developers on our specific individual impact to our specific neighborhood, and they have been very, excuse me, great at incorporating that into their process. So I don't want to belittle that at all. They have been good to work with. I recognize they're out of town. They are a property owner. They have the right to try and amend the current planning and zoning and that, that right. However, I do reiterate the fact that as far as multifamily, whether it's Daytona, Ormond, anywhere in the area, just please be sensitive to the precedent that you set. Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Michael Gentry, followed by Christina Delage.
Good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here. Michael Gentry, Ten Indian Springs Drive. We were the first home that was finished in the development and have been residents since its inception. After much conversation with city staff, the developer, the engineer, the attorney, we concluded that this was in the best interest of all the options that we were presented and discussed at length with the developer and his attorney. So it's not, it's with consternation, at least from me personally, and I think the discussion that our board and officers have had that we've come to the conclusion, this is probably the lesser of the impact on the community. So having said that, Troy presented the official statement from the association. I support it in that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Delage, followed by Tom Verne.
Good evening, all. I actually didn't come prepared to speak, but I live in Breakaway Trails. Nobody's actually brought that up. Breakaway Trails, Timber Creek, we all go in on that same street. Yes, Breakaway has another entrance on Forty. But the traffic is insane already. I don't mean to be so direct, but this is a very bad idea. I'd like to know where you live. I'd like to know where Mark lives. Where you are trying to put these two hundred and seventy units behind Walgreens that's already hard to get in and out of. I think that, you know, you guys mentioned affordable housing. Have we talked much about the property values that are going to potentially tank because of apartment complexes in our backyard now? I know that we are talking about that you're trying to preserve the green space and the places where the, the, you know, where the animals are going to be able to live. I already have a next-door post where there's a bobcat on top of their pool covering, okay? Where are the animals going to go, y'all? Like, it's not that complicated. I feel like there's many other places that these apartment complexes could go. We're moved here, I'm from Florida, moved away for a while, moved to Denver, Colorado. Everybody loves Denver, Colorado. The traffic, the, I think everybody in the whole wide world's either moving to Denver, Colorado, or to Florida, okay? It's insane. Prices are insane. I just, I think that, sorry, I think this is a really poor location to choose. I don't think that anything good is going to come from this. Specifically, Breakaway Trails is not protected. I think people can just wander through the woods there. We're a gated community, but not if we have a whole slew of people that can just kind of wander through. So yeah, that's, I think the density is, the density of the accidents. The traffic jams are going to just be, I moved here to be part of a small community. I moved from Denver to be part of thous- you know, millions and millions back to like, you know, a smaller community. And that's what I think most people live here for. So, thanks.
Thank you. Tom Verne, followed by Mike Willard.
Good evening, and thank you for the time. I have not prepared remarks, but from what I've heard this evening, I'm looking at two hundred and seventy units, probably something like five hundred and forty, five hundred and fifty new automobiles entering Granada Boulevard. The speed limit on Granada Boulevard at that point is fifty miles an hour. So you have cars that are entering a fifty mile an hour, two-lane, four-lane highway and attempting to make a U-turn within a quarter of a mile. If they don't make that U-turn, they go down to the Breakaway Trails light and make their U-turn there. I think this is a dangerous situation. My other comment is regarding, they're saving seven historic trees. I looked at the, at the plot plan that they had presented, and they're cutting down almost twelve hundred trees. Clearcutting twelve hundred trees to save seven historic trees. I think this is unnecessary. I think it's, there are better ways to go about this, this development. And there are lots of examples of low-impact development across Ormond Beach. And I think the low-impact development regulations that are part of the planning department's agenda should be enforced. Rather than cutting down every tree as they've done at Old King's Road and Granada, save thirty percent of the trees, not seven trees. This is a wetlands area, and those wetlands are important not only to wildlife, but also to drainage and stormwater control. That's my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, Mike Willard.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. My name is Mike Willard. I live in the Moss Point Development. Just briefly, I just want to note my objection to the authorization to increase the number of units to seven, to two hundred and seventy. Primarily, one concern would be the traffic and congestion. Primarily, the concern would be residents using the ingress and egress of the Walgreens on Timber Creek. Timber Creek at that intersection of Granada and Timber Creek, especially any time after seven-thirty till about nine-thirty in the morning, typically is backed up from the intersection all the way to the Moss Point Turn-In. And oftentimes, people will use the Moss Point Turn-In to do a U-turn on Timber Creek to head towards Granada. My concern, that's going to increase dramatically, not only cause a risk to traffic heading northbound, I'm sorry, southbound on Timber Creek from all the developments north of us, and also people pulling out of Moss Point Drive, which is a concern. The other concern would be the increase in the building height, increasing the potential for light pollution in the surrounding neighborhoods, and then just potential for light pollution in the surrounding neighborhoods and then just the increased, uh, noise that, uh, the, that increased density would bring. So, again, the, my position would be to, uh, deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission, that's all the cards I have. Uh, we will move into a motion and second and then discussion very shortly here, but first, if you have any questions for our planning director or legal department or, uh, the applicant Mark Watts now would be the time. Deputy Mayor Bradley.
Mr. I'll just start with a couple of questions. One, um, and this would be to Stephen, um, regarding the PBD. Now, these are three, uh, separately zoned parcels. You've got, uh, Volusia County Resource Corridor, um, A2, Volusia County Agriculture, and Ormond Beach B8. So, to rezone this to a PBD, you could take those three parcels or those three different zoning categories and do a project such as this, correct?
Correct.
If the PBD were not to go through, then you still have A2, RC, and B8.
Correct. So, what we would do based on the annexation is we would administratively rezone the open space conservation to a special environmental zoning designation and take the residential office retail to a B1 zoning classification because they need to have a city zoning.
Correct.
So, if this, if this request is, um, denied, those would be the two actions based on the annexation.
Could they do as many units if that were to occur?
The, the B10, um, has a thirty-foot height limit and ten units per acre. The other choices that would be compatible with...
Well, ten units per acre on the B8?
On the, on the ROR, on the, on the B1. So, the other zoning districts which would be compatible with the residential office retail have a greater height allowance. They allow up to seventy-five feet. So, we wouldn't wanna go to the, for example, the bou- B9 Boulevard or B10, which is why we would select the B1 zoning district.
But I guess my question is, can they accomplish what they're trying to accomplish without a PBD?
They, so, I, I think you heard a couple of things. One is their, their zoning allows today, by right, a hundred and sixty-four.
Correct.
There's a pending law that, that will come into effect that, that I agree with what Mr. Watts said.
The Volkite.
Basically, um, the state legislature has, has, uh, prevented local governments from enforcing their zoning. So, they would be allowed thirty-two units per acre, they would be allowed at least three stories, and it would be a by right zoning. It wouldn't come to the commission.
Okay, that was the question I wanted to start with. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just wanna piggyback on what Harold just said. So, given the conversation, we just talked about the Live Local Act, can that property accommodate those numbers that were presented to us of the five twenty-five, the five stories? I know that that's what's allowed, but with the, given the wetlands and, and the wetlands out there, I'm sure that they still need to be preserved, correct? With the Live Local?
Correct.
Can they do this, this massive amount of construction?
Right. It's hard to see without actually doing a engineered plan, but remember they have additional open spaces they've preserved, right? So, they're required fifty percent, fifteen percent, they're at twenty percent, twenty-seven percent today. So, I'm not gonna stand here and tell you that that's what they can get. They'd have to go through a site plan, um, the, the setbacks, the landscape buffers, those are not exempted. What, what the act exempts is density, the process, and then, um, the height. And they have to do forty percent, forty percent affordable housing to qualify for that, that provision.
Any other questions for Stephen at this time?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Sargent, you're recognized for a question for Mr. Watts.
So, I have a couple, uh, questions, um, and comments. You know, growth is gonna happen, floor's been discovered, developers have rights and I welcome them. Um, that's why we have this process. Um, however, I have the following. Um, density obviously knows a major concern. For this, uh, I noticed that the school concurrency determination has expired. Has that been updated?
It has not yet, but it's required to be updated before you could issue a development order.
The reason why I bring that up is, uh, Jarlene from the Ormond Observatory last week wrote a good article on, um, April twelfth. Y'all can read it if you want on your own. I'll just highlight a few things. But it says in here, um, let me find it. There was a project in Deltona, three hundred and fifty-two units. Um, Mr. Clone said that it would generate forty-five students. He added that the calculation was based on a formula and a methodology using ten-year-old data. So, I just question, um, our schools, um, being overcrowded, putting kits and portables. And we know that education, when you're in a portable, is probably not the best. Um, that was my question on, um, my other is on the hospitals. Um, I've sat in the hospital in the ER three or four times this past year with my mom. No rooms were available, we waited in the hallway. Um, I actually, on my way here today, spoke to a resident. She spoke, uh, just recently, she waited eight hours in the emergency room before leaving to take their loved one home, never to see a doctor or care. Um, as we know, traffic is a concern. I'm just really struggling with this density. I'm just wondering, is two seventy a hard number or is there two fifty that we can go to? Two twenty, two hundred? Um, I don't know if there's, because I know also that, excuse me, um, I believe after the January meeting, the option for one sixty-four was presented to the, uh, the review committee, site plan review committee. So, I just want the public to know that there's another option on the table and to see if we can, um, come to some grounds here.
Yeah, let me, let me speak to the, the school thing, uh, uh, school question more, more specifically, and then I'll, I'll ask Garrison to speak a little bit to the, to the numbers. Um, with regard to the schools and, and let me, let me make clear with regard to all things that we gauge from a standpoint of concurrency. So, your code and your comprehensive plan says, we have to verify whether or not public infrastructure is available concurrent with the impacts of a development. We look at that from the standpoint of utilities, water, roads, and things of that nature. You set the rules on that and the school board sets the rules on that. Every landowner, well, let me use the word landowner versus developers because they, our landowners here in town, um, you know, every landowner has to comply with that no matter what the density or intensity of their development is going to be. Um, so, we have to check in on that at various points in the process. At the zoning stage, we look at it and say, okay, can we, are we planning for this a level of capacity, this level of density and development? Um, when you go through the site plan review and you get the actual, uh, permission and development order to move forward with construction of a site, you have to go back, for example, for things like school concurrency. The statement that you have from the school district now is a non-binding statement, which means that those seats could be assigned to something else before we get there. You have to have a binding certificate of capacity from the school district. In other words, they have to look at it again. They have to look at that based on the other growth that's occurred in the area and verify if capacity is still presently available to take on the school, the students that are generated by development. And so, that process is still required. Um, we would not be able to get a development order issued by the city based on your rules unless we provide that certification from the school district. Um, we don't control how they do the county. Um, now, obviously, it should be based on the, the most recent data. I agree with that a hundred percent. Same thing is true with roads. Um, we have to, uh, we're not through a PBD circumventing any of the rules and regulations that you have or the TPO has or the county has with regard to how we quantify and vest impacts to the road system, how we contribute to the repairs and the fixes on those things. And we're not asking for any, uh, exception to that. Um, you know, we, we, we heard from a number of people today about traffic and, and I, I agree. We, we live in an area that's growing. Um, I think we heard from a significant number of the people that spoke said they moved here. They moved to the area. They moved to the area for reasons X, Y, or Z. We are an area where people are moving to. Um, you have planned for the growth that, that is, goes hand in hand with that, um, in places like this location, where you said, if you do the bare minimum that our code allows, you can have a hundred and sixty-four units. You also put performance standards in place that said, if you want to go higher on density, then you have to meet these thresholds. And that's the, the analysis that, that your staff has gone through to say, not our plan, it's not our plan that, that has those, those thresholds, it's your comprehensive plan. So, you know, a couple of comments were made about coming here and knowing what you have. Yeah, the zoning allows a hundred and sixty-four. And your comprehensive plan says, you can go up to four seventy-one on this property and here's how to get there. Do a better project, design it better, have better architectural standards, have more preservation, have bigger buffers, all of the things that, that, um, you know, Mr. McMillan and his, and his, you know, company have done. So, with that, with your question on density, let me ask Garrison to, to add anything else on that. I think for the level of quality that you're looking at with this project, you're probably at that, that base, but I'll let Garrison speak to that.
How you doing? Garrison McMillan with Tellis Partners. Um, just a quick update on, kinda, or recap as to where we are. Um, we bought this property in, uh, July twenty, I mean, June twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand and one. We've been working through the process, working with the community, trying to come to a conclusion as far as to what is the best outcome for all the stakeholders here. Um, we deem ourselves as one of those stakeholders as well as everybody here in the room. Uh, we have, you know, been paying taxes on this property for almost three years now and we're at a point now where we're going to move forward on some sort of development. And we feel that this is a planned development. This is something that has had the input of all of the community, is something that everybody has had some sort of give and take. And to Mark's point, a hundred and sixty-four unit is a kind of a by right development that we could, in, uh, pursue. And now, all of a sudden, there's also an alternative plan that we also can consider as well. But we feel that this particular plan is a, uh, is the best and highest and best use for the community and all of its stakeholders. And that's the, the route that we wanna pursue and we hope that you guys, uh, feel the same way.
And I think on two seventy was the unit count I'll add, just from a number standpoint, I think.
Any other questions for Mr. Watts?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Commission will now move into, uh, discussion, comments, and who would like to start. Commissioner Persis.
Good evening, everyone. Um, this is near and dear to my heart. This is in Zone Three and I have talked to so many people in Zone Three and Moss Point and, um, Timber Creek and all the surrounding areas. Um, and nobody is excited about this. I mean, just to be perfectly honest, nobody. They're all very sad and disappointed about something like this coming to their area. This was on our desk when we came today and this is a picture of traffic on Timber Creek Road. And I venture to say that it's worse than this picture because I go up and down that road a lot because I have a grand, grandchildren that live out in that area. It's much worse, um, during that traffic time. And tonight, we had ten people speak about this. We had eight that are against it. We had two that were concerned that, or, or maybe two people that said they won't, they thought this was kind of the, the lesser evil, so to speak, you know, maybe like a less negative impact. But, you know, we're in Ormond Beach. Ormond Beach is special. We have beautiful places. We shouldn't be looking at something that just has a less negative impact. That made me really sad when I heard that because that's not what we do here in Ormond Beach. I had three points that I wanna make. Uh, first of all, the traffic and safety problems which will, which already exist in this area will worsen with this high-density development. That is a fact. Number two, the development is not compatible with the adjacent established residential areas of single-family homes and will negatively impact these property owners to the north, to the east, and to the west. And finally, almost two thousand five hundred people have signed a petition against this development. This is something that people really don't want and I represent the people, not in just Zone Three, but in all of Ormond Beach. So, my vote tonight will be a no.
Commissioner Talbot.
So, if you all, um, don't mind, I'm just gonna read kind of something that I've kinda put together and add a few comments from what I've heard tonight. And for the record, I have talked to the developer, I have talked to Mr. Watts. I've spoken at length with the Indian Springs folks and, um, some Moss Point folks as well. As elected officials, my duty to represent the residents of Ormond Beach. It's a position I take very seriously. Every project, every decision that comes my way is carefully researched and thought about in great detail. I've spent significant time listening and trying to understand the concerns of the neighboring residents. Ormond Beach, you're right, Susan, is a very special place and that's thanks to all of the people that are serving now and all the people that have served in the past and the residents here. Growth is inevitable and we definitely, um, are feeling the effects of growth from all our neighboring cities. The challenge comes from balancing the developers' rights and the residents' will. Some projects are built by outside folks, um, profits are made and they may walk away. The project is here to stay and we as residents live with the consequences of our decisions. Many letters were written in opposition of the project citing concerns of traffic, unsafe U-turns, incompatible uses for single-family homes, over-development, overburdened hospitals, no apartments west of ninety-five, and not friendly to wildlife. The planning board voted five to zero in denial. And I did not see one letter of support in this project when I was doing the research. In response to the residents' request, the developer did eliminate buildings that were encroaching west towards Indian Springs and agreed to build a large masonry wall with an increased buffer, decreased the building heights, um, um, and stopped the traffic from spilling onto Timber Creek Road. My personal philosophy is that you make the best decision, given the circumstances and the information available at the time. And I just, you know, Stephen Spraker's very good about reminding us and I just wanna remind all of us as commissioners, we do have three choices. We can vote yes to approve the project as presented with an increase in density and improvements to the property. The density will go from ten units per acre to, um, as allowed, to eighteen units per acre, or one sixty-four to two seventy. A PBD may allow extra height and some extra length. As a planned business development, um, will add an increased value to the property, no doubt, with the special amenities, the walls, the buffers, and the road configurations. Secondly, one can vote no to reject the project as presented. Developer can omit the, omit the improvements he's making to the property, which we've already talked about, what, um, what those, um, amenities were. And a no to amend the zoning map precludes a no to the development order of the planned business development. What will remain is the ability of the developer to build a hundred and sixty-four units without public input or without commission approval. And now, given the new information we know about the legislator, the Live Local Act, we could have up to forty, forty percent affordable housing, a possible five hundred and twenty-five units, up to five stories tall. Thirdly, we can vote yes to the proposed property requesting a decrease in density. And I know that, that, we were just talking to you about that. It's, it's my, and, and it's my opinion, and I'm gonna plagiarize Christina if she doesn't mind, I think it's a very bad idea of where we're at right now. Timber Creek cannot handle the project as proposed. The density is just too great. The corner is struggling to keep up with the traffic and there is a safety factor. I do travel Timber Creek Road down, um, many times a day, so I do feel the impact of that. And although the project has accommodated Indian Springs neighborhood and they have written a letter of approval, I cannot help but to acknowledge all the other residents concerned with the density and the traffic. I worry about us opening a Pandora's Box wider than it already is with our growth. I believe the best solution... I believe the best solution for us would be to approve the project with condition of a lower density. If the agreement to decrease the density cannot be made, then I'm strongly considering denying the project and praying to God that we get a good project at the end.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Sargent.
I've made most of my comments, but I also pulled some recent apartments that have been built in the area. Uh, Epsilon Apartments on LPGA, sixty-five acres with three hundred units. Nappier Apartments Phase One, twenty-nine acres with two hundred and sixty units. Nappier Apartments Phase Two, um, nineteen acres at a hundred and twenty units, and Watermark was thirty-two acres at three hundred units. I would really like to see us to work on the density for this project, see if we can come to terms on something, because, like I said before, um, for the public to know that there is a proposal to do one sixty-four at a lower income. It wouldn't be Section Eight, but it is a lower-income subsidized housing, uh, type of project, um, that is on the table. It's already been presented to the site, uh, review committee. And then for the record, I have met with Mr. Watts, Mr. McMillan, Michael Gentry, Troy Railsback, Michael Lambert, uh, Dr. Reese, and John Deeds from Moss Point. That is all my comments for now, Mr. Mayor. Just if we can't get to the, um, lower density, I, I don't think I can support this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will echo many of the comments that have been made. I think, you know, the biggest thing we see here, the biggest concern is, is the density of this project. And of course, density equals traffic. And, uh, and for the record, I've also spoken with Mr. Watts, Mr. McMillan, uh, and Mr. Deeds and Mr. Weiss out of the, uh, Moss Point subdivision, um, and a few other folks that live over in Indian Springs. And I do want to commend, uh, the applicant for, for meeting with the folks from Indian Springs and, and, and kind of addressing some of their concerns. Unfortunately, I don't think the folks in, in, in Moss Point feel they got the same shake. So, uh, they have a lot of concerns as well, and they are also neighboring, you know, I think, does it increase the value of the property in question? The answer is probably yes. What does it do to the neighboring property values? Well, I'm not so sure. I'm not so sure it helps them at all. So, you know, if we can talk about decreasing density, I think that's, that's, that's fine. Um, you know, one hundred and sixty-four units is a lot more palatable than two hundred and seventy. But, you know, I'm also concerned with the, the thought that the state could come in and, and approve something different. Um, you know, do we, do we gamble? Do we roll the dice and let the state determine what happens in Ormond Beach? I don't like that idea. Um, so I would rather if we can come to some sort of agreement. But with this, I think it's just, we're, we're trying to put, you know, ten pounds of sand in a three-pound bag, the way I see it right now. You know, moving, and, 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 and the other thing is too, I, I, I understood in speaking with the applicant, if we went with one hundred and sixty-four units, you wouldn't do the ingress egress off of Granada, it would be on Timber Creek. I get that, but either way, we're still dealing with a lot of cars in a very congested area. So I don't, you know, if, if you take it off Timber Creek, you're just putting on Granada. But if you're doing one hundred and sixty-four units, a lot less density, fewer trips, fewer cars. So that's kind of where I'm at, Mr. Mayor. Kind of concur with the rest of the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, uh, disclosure-wise, I'll let folks know, I feel like, you know, as we were going through the speakers tonight, I, uh, received your emails previously. I read your names in the comments, uh, where you spoke to the planning board, and then I heard you tonight, so I feel like I've well heard the concerns of the residents from out there. Also, I think it was in January, I met with Mr. Watts and Garrison, uh, might have been an hour, maybe less, and we talked about basically that one, uh, sheet that you showed where you were working with the Indian Springs folks, trying to come to some concessions. And we gave you, I think the whole commission gave you a lot of extra time to do that. And so, uh, those are the required disclosures on my part. Commissioner, I don't know if anybody else had any required disclosures they wanted to make. I know sometimes it's-
I had a meeting too with Mr. Watts, yes, and Mr. Garrison, yes.
Good deal. Um, so yeah. Deputy Mayor, you said ten pounds, and Joyce is buying pizza for everybody, you said ten pounds of, uh, sand in a three-pound bag. And the problem is, uh, based on the Live Local Act is if we don't figure out something, then the state's going to put twenty pounds of sand in a three-pound bag, and we're not going to be able to do much about it, from what I'm hearing. So, uh, I'd like to hear from our city attorney and/or Stephen Spraker about what the possibility of five hundred and twenty-five units going out there by law from the state of Florida, where they take away complete local control and don't allow us to control. So maybe they can't get five hundred and twenty-five, but if they could get four hundred in there, and a hundred and sixty of those would have to be affordable housing, that would not come through this commission. That would have to be required by law to be administratively approved. Uh, and that law takes effect July first, twenty twenty-three, so at midnight oh one on July first, twenty twenty-three, if Garrison comes down here with an application for five hundred and twenty-five units, it goes through the administrative process. Commissioner, we never see it. We never get the chance to protect our residents with that. Administratively, they decide, okay, they can, they can't do five hundred and twenty-five, but they can do four hundred and fifty, or they can do four hundred, or they can do three hundred and seventy-five. And forty percent of that has to be affordable housing. That's the problem, uh, that I see without figuring something else out, and it's important enough to our community to get it right. It would be easy just to flat deny it. That'd be the easiest thing. We'd be out of here in about an hour with the rest of the work that we have on the commission, but I'm not interested necessarily in doing the easy thing. I want to do what's correct and best for all our residents for the long term. And, um, it is complicated, unfortunately, but, so Randy, I'll let you, uh, weigh in on that, and I want to hear from Stephen on that, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a, a very difficult spot for everybody to be in, and this project is probably, um, one of the more challenging ones I think you've had in a very long time. Um, the effects of the new proposed law, it's real. Um, unfortunately, um, it follows, um, a continued theme of eroding home rule powers. I mean, that's really what you're looking at here, so, um, there's really three options. The developer has, um, other, um, the ability to develop the land in other, in other, other ways. It's really a matter of which way he goes, the developer goes, um, in the event that the commission, uh, chooses to deny the application this evening. Um, you know, the, the, the effect of the new law is that it'll be an administrative review and approval. It won't come back here. You won't have a control over, um, looking at the, the questions on density or traffic or height or anything like that. That's the reality of what you're looking at. Um, and so the quest for your decision really is to make the best decision, given those options. And you're going to have to wrestle in your gut with what that is. Unfortunately, that comes down to that. I can't make that decision for you. But the practical reality is, is you have to determine whether the application you have for you this evening is better than any of the other alternatives available to the landowner developer. Stephen can speak better to the process for approval. I'm not going to get down into his weeds with that, but that's basically what you're looking at. If you can come to some negotiated agreement this evening that would result in, uh, some changes that would be acceptable to, um, most everybody, because I don't think you're going to, uh, make changes that are acceptable to everybody. Um, it would likely result in the need to change the site plans. So depending on whether it's a substantial change, uh, a minor change, that may result in a need for an additional, um, um, reading before the commission, we'll just have to weigh through that. But I think, uh, from your perspective, you know, density's an issue for you, from what I've heard, traffic's an issue, um, safety's an issue with respect to the U-turn, height can be an issue, um, property values can be an issue. Um, and so those are the questions you're going to want to talk to, uh, the applicant about. The planning director can talk to you about the process he's going to have to, um, undertake if he gets an administrative application. So, and I don't know if that answers your question, or if you have additional questions.
No, it does, and I'll let Stephen, uh, he's not sweating yet. He doesn't sweat much. Um, I'll let him talk to us about, you know, what the process would be. And Stephen, it's important, that's the only reason I'm kind of putting you on the spot, is how many units could they, uh, ultimately probably get? I think Commissioner Tallent may have asked that. I'm asking it again. Uh, as close, obviously, we're not going to hold you to it perfectly, but as close as you can get. Because what I heard before was three commissioners looking for less density, but I heard the applicant say they can't do much less and do the quality of the project that they want to do, so.
Right, so again, the choices, um, so the Live Local Act is still something that everyone's digesting. But what, what clearly it does, it, it allows the, the maximum density, allows three stories or whatever the, the maximum height within a mile. I believe that to be fifty feet. I, I haven't done that, but, so I, I believe that would be the height. Um, it does not exempt you from parking. There's no Votran services here, so I think parking would be a struggle to, to do that many units unless you do, um, like Ormond Renaissance put parking under their building and incorporate it into there. So I, I don't think reasonably they can get five hundred plus. I think they can get three hundred. Their, their project engineer may have already done a maximum development scenario, so we may want to ask the project engineer. But I think, you know, from a process standpoint, it would be administratively through the Site Planner Review Committee, we would take comments. But in the end of the day, the Site Planner Review Committee, the technical committee, we can only, you know, check the number of parking spaces, fifteen percent natural preservation. Basically, we check down the boxes. There's no discretionary or, um, the no discretionary approval.
All right, Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question for Stephen. Remember, we, we had the, um, issue before, and I don't know if that was subsidized apartments or if that was just workforce, considered workforce housing? When they proposed the apartments out there, I think on Booth Road?
Correct. So, so Olive Grove in two thousand and ten built on West Granada. Same group Beneficial Communities was seeking to go, um, out on Interchange Boulevard where the extended stay is currently. So they went through a tax credit, um, they had to do a bid and get tax credits in order to bid to, to build. They were not successful, so they abandoned that project.
Well, and something else, you have to have public transportation available. Votran doesn't go west of five.
As part of the tax credit, you know? I'm not sure what, what program the applicant's using, but they may or may not need, you know, public transportation.
Uh, I still have questions, yep, and I still have questions for Stephen, but Mark will, and we will get to you. Let me, uh, go to Commissioner, were you done there? All right. Commissioner Sargent, and then Commissioner Persis.
Mine's actually just a general question, Mr. Mayor. I just kind of want to know if, you know, I don't think a lot of the residents out here, um, knew about the Live Local Act, and I just, maybe we should open it back up and see if that changes anyone's mind or how people, um, perceive it, if anything's changed maybe at the end.
And Commissioner Persis.
I just wanted to know, um, and maybe this is for the, the builder, the, the developer, why, did you ever consider single-family homes that were more, that was a, more compatible in that area?
So, just before you answer, so that zoning doesn't allow single-family, so, so-
We can change it.
You could, you could change it, but it, you would also have to change the land use. So you'd be doing both land use and zoning changes. More, more likely, they would use it for the commercial use, which, which it has today. So, and, and just, you know, in, in your deliberations, remember, a commercial use is going to have nearly double the traffic as, as a residential use. So if you get a, a retailer, a, a big box, those are going to have greater traffic impacts than what's being proposed today.
And if you change it, that opens up Burt Harris complications as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question.
If you change the use-
If you change the land use, yes, with the house. Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor-
Mr. Mayor, in, in light of what Commissioner Sargent said, I think he has a good point. Um, you know, and, and, and I think, I don't know if I would be comfortable, or if the rest of you all would be comfortable deciding something tonight on something we just brought before this evening, as far as the Live Local Act, as far as understanding, and as Stephen said, that people are still trying to digest what it would be. I'm not sure we could make a decision on that tonight to say which is better, which is worse. I mean, and I hate dragging something like this out, but is it something that we need time to compare? Compare what, with what the applicant's proposing versus what could come down the pipe that we have no control over.
And I'll let the applicant speak to that. Um, and any other questions that the commission has?
I just, this Live Local Act, is, is it a definite? Because I keep hearing if-
Yes, it's passed.
It's definitely-
Signed by the governor.
It was signed, effective, one hundred percent.
Yes.
Okay.
I think Mark or Stephen.
So the Senate bill, if I can, I'll speak.
Sure.
Senate Bill one oh two, uh, was signed by the governor, I think, on March twenty-ninth. Uh, it'll go into effect on, on July first, but the legislature passed it as a way to deal with the shortage of affordable housing throughout the state. And what it does is it says if you have property that is owned commercial, so the property here is B-eight on the thirteen acres of the property, if it's owned commercial, industrial or mixed use, uh, and a, a property owner comes in and proposes, um, you know, to develop it with a, with a project that includes a thirty-year commitment to have forty percent of the units in that project be affordable, which means they have to be below, I think it's below a hundred percent, I think it's eighty percent of the, uh, area median income. You have to do that by deed restriction or some other mechanism. Uh, then the, the project must be approved, I think is the language that was added to the statute. It must be approved, and it must be approved administratively without any hearings or conditional use or special exception approval. So it goes through just the administrative review. And the density is set by the statute. The maximum density under the statute is the maximum density that the city or the jurisdiction has anywhere within the city limits. So here, I think it's thirty-two units in each.
Within any zoning district.
Within any zoning district that you have within the city. And the height is the maximum height allowed by any current zoning within a mile of that site. So I will tell you philosophically, I think it, it sets a bad precedent from the home, from the home rules standpoint. I, I'm a proponent of home rule. I will tell you, it's real, it's been adopted, it's been signed by the governor, it goes into effect on July first. So my point in raising that this evening is, right now, we have the best opportunity to decide, do we want to lose that control, or do we want to have an agreement that, that gets us, we're looking for more than the hundred and sixty-four. We have the problem that to do the things that we promised to do with the screening laws and the other improvements that we've added to the PBD, it keeps us from being able to go below two seventy, uh, because of the, the costs that we've added to the, the overall project, plus the level of detail and quality that their, that their company brings into their projects in having Class A developments. So that's kind of the, the things that we're, we're balancing is what type of multifamily will be here? Because it's not a question of if it will be here, it's what type. And how much do we want to control that process? And I think that the most control you will have is tonight, or in this process.
Mark, give me a second. Stephen, or Randy, anything you want to add to that Live Local explanation?
Yes, sir. I think, uh, I think Mr. Watts, um, gave a, a very accurate summary of that, so, um, you know, other than to emphasize, I think this is the opportunity for the commission to have, um, to determine, um, you know, the, the type of project that's going to occur on that site, um, how much control, uh, you may be willing to have over that process. So it's a difficult position for you to be in, obviously, um, but it, it is what it is. So, you know, in, in your quest to make the best decision, you're just going to have to weigh all of that out and balance.
All right. And then, um, so, Mr. Watts, the question for you and your client, then, before we can really move on here as a commission, is how low can you go or will you go from the two seventy? And I think that's, that's relevant. And then, Commissioner, we need to talk amongst ourselves about whether, uh, we want to open public comment back up. Let me ask Garrison to come up and, and address them.
A couple of things here. So when, when we originally applied, we applied for three hundred units. Uh, it was, it was ten buildings, and again, on a, on the fly, uh, at the planning board meeting, they asked us to, Stephen and, and his, uh, staff said if we, if you could get rid of building nine, we would support the project, and we, 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 we removed that building- we would support the project, and we, 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 we removed that building to two seventy-six. It was a twenty-four unit building. And then, again, after all the input that we've been back and forth, back and forth, and then obviously that additional road that goes out to, uh, State Road Forty, uh, cutting through, that is an expensive road that we're going to build to access that property rather than access off of Timber Creek, which was the, the original plan from the get-go. So we, 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 a lot of give, 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 trying to get to a point that where we have something that is amenable to at least some of the stakeholders here. And so at two hundred and seventy units is really honestly the kind of the drop dead, done point for us.
So, Commissioner, understanding that, uh, as we talk amongst ourselves regarding opening public comment back up, do we want to do that in light of the Live Local Act, which really prior to now has not come up? Essentially, I guess the choices would be the two seventy or whatever they can squeeze in under the Live Local Act.
I certainly think it's an important discussion, and I think in, in light of what's been discussed and highlighted, we may want to discuss it again with, with the folks.
Particularly Indian Springs, Moss Point. I think, um, they're the two neighboring neighbors that are most intimately affected. I would love to hear from them back.
And Commissioner Sargent, I think you are in favor. Commissioner Persis, I'm sure you are in favor of hearing from these folks again. So, uh, we will go back through the cards. You don't have to speak. If it changes your position, you can speak, but, uh, Donna Owens?
Just to make one comment that, just so the public knows, the applicant on January eleventh met with the Site Plan Review Committee, um, for the one sixty-four, and that included the, um, subsidized housing, uh, lower income. So that's already on the table. Um, it's just a matter of, do we want to, with this Live Local law, gamble and potentially get three hundred plus? So I just think that's something for everyone to know.
And we would ask... Sorry, Donna, bear with us.
Yeah, ob- obviously, that was before the Live Local Act, but yes, the one sixty-four is on the table. Uh, it is, it, again, it is a far more, um, it's a, it, it doesn't have all the buffers and everything that you guys want from a standpoint of it. It, it uses a, a, it's a more horizontal product, and it would, uh, be a tax credit, uh, application for a four percent tax credit on the, uh, affordable housing.
Thank you. All right, Donna, and if you would, limit your comments to, does that change your position one way, one way or the other?
So you just want to know that, because I think I have a little bit more to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I think it's interesting that it was brought up by the developer. I realize that it's a signed law and it's something that's going to be, have to be dealt with perhaps. I don't know how knowledgeable everyone on the panel or the residents are about the Live Local Act. And what are the res- deciding factors in the state approving it or not approving it? You know, there's no, as you mentioned, there's no transportation by the county up there. Um, there's not enough healthcare, uh, services available for the current population, let alone if we grow to five hundred apartments or three hundred apartments. Um, so I think that there's a lot more here that we don't know. And my recommendation will be to table it today, get some education, and come back. And I know that July first is looming because we have left this go for quite several meetings, but I think it may be worth taking a breath and looking into the, the matter a little bit more closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Weiss?
I think a picture is being made in great detail that may not be correct. You're given two choices. One choice is to, is what the, all the residents almost universally want, is not to give the exception. The other, you're balancing it against, is this a, a apocalypse, where you're describing massive uncontrolled growth, bringing in tons of poor people, drugs are the implications, and you're saying it's either A or B. And in all honesty, there may be nuances, and you're predicting that the final result is going to be a catastrophic increase in density, and of course, we would make the decision to agree with the builder. And I'm not sure that that is the outcome, and I feel blackmailed by the presentation because I'm given A or B, and I know what A is, that's very clear, what they can build, but B is being presented as a fait accompli that is irreversible, irrevocable, and punitive. And I honestly think, to some extent, I feel set up.
Thank you, Doctor, and, uh, I'll just point out real quick, affordable housing is not necessarily for people. There are, uh, a lot of nurses, a lot of police, firefighters, retirees, teachers, military. We have Olive Grove that's an affordable housing complex right here on Granada. Mr. Lambert?
I'm not that familiar with this new bill, but from what I've heard from the city attorney and from what I've heard from Mr. Spraker, uh, is that Mr. Spraker says possibly three hundred units would fit on there. If I'm the builder and I came here asking for three hundred units in December, and I can get them in July and then make the profit that I wanted originally, why wouldn't I wait? That's what doesn't make any sense to me. So it, to me, there is something else going on here, uh, somewhat of a threat. But I, you know, I just, and the other thing is, and I know Mr. Hayes knows this, just because a law goes into effect doesn't mean it remains. Uh, it can be challenged. Laws are challenged every day and found to be unconstitutional. I question this one. But again, i- if they can get their three hundred units in July, wait till then and do it.
Thank you. Mr. Hooper? Safi? Resto? Mr. Railsback?
Troy Railsback, twenty-seven Indian Springs, representing, uh, Indian Springs Gateway as well. Uh, the little bit of background to our support for the project is we don't want a target adjacent to our property. We don't want a shipping truck or anything, um, that is not controlled to access that site at night. Um, and whatever happens can spill into our neighborhood. Um, that was the reason we adamantly worked with the developer and their team to try and find something that, um, would be amicable, um, to us. I agree with Mr. Weiss in the, uh, Moss Point position about traffic on Timber Creek. Um, I will give kudos to them adj- addressing the traffic. Um, it's one of those, one of the things that I think is, is a, is a major concern. We also have the concern about forty. I know FDOT is one of the controlling entities of that road. We hope with the development that goes out west that is, uh, some type of reciprocal contribution to the impacts to ninety-five and west of ninety-five. We lost a turn lane. We turn in there every day. People are turning heads, trying to make U-turns. We feel that's an unsafe thing. I want to reiterate that. That was in our original letter. Um, I would hope that the developer and their team, um, whatever concessions they can make to find that, that number, that makes the most sense and is palatable for the community and the commission and the precedent in the future, which is, was part of our original letter as an association. We want to make sure you're sensitive to that, and we respectfully request, if there's any additional concessions, we would, um, uh, hope that it can be reached here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Gentry?
Michael Gentry, ten Indian Springs Drive. I would tell you, um, I didn't know anything about the Live Local Act until tonight. However, uh, many of the points that have been discussed about that, uh, we had with the developer because after one or two conversations, um, they brought to our attention that they could go at a one sixty-four, uh, unit complex, and most likely that would include some form of affordable housing. So after that conversation and many other follow-up, um, commu- much other follow-up communication, the reason we landed on supporting the two seventy-two was to that end because the developer and Mark, uh, and Mr. Newkirk had all indicated to us, if, if it doesn't go at two seventy-two, it's probably going to land in some for, some sort of affordable housing. I submit to the commission and you, Mr. Mayor, that our development will be the most impacted from foot traffic from this apartment complex. We are a gated community. We, after a couple of, uh, break-ins, our house being one of them, uh, we closed our gate twenty-four seven. We worked a great deal, and one of my main sticking points with the developer was a solid wall because having the front of the development protected and the ability of residents that don't own the property, that are going to be there with coming through the back door, made no sense to me. So, uh, Susan, back to your comment, and I, I don't want to necessarily call it comparison of evils. However, when faced with the facts of the apartment complex as originally presented or a much lesser, um, project, which Mr. Spraker, um, well, everybody I talked to validated that essentially, uh, the developer could come back at one sixty-four, fit in the box of ordinances and zoning, and not come before the planning board or the commission, only through the SPRC. And it was our feeling in our discussion that eventually they would get there. So if they didn't get the two seventy-two, they would definitely go the route of the one sixty-four. And we felt the better option was the two seventy-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Delage?
Thank you all for your time tonight. Uh, I don't think it's, I think we're saying the same thing over and over again. Um, I don't feel like we have the infrastructure, uh, in place for this development yet. Um, I am all for growth. You mentioned growth. I am all for growth, uh, but it needs to be responsible. The growth needs to be responsible. Um, police, fire, traffic, wildlife, the density, the property values. I don't care if it's low-income housing or not. Apartments never bring property values up. Never. Uh, the safety, the U-turns, the kids and the schools, where are they going to go to school? I feel like there are so many things that still need to be addressed and figured out before there's a go on this project. I feel like if July is going to happen one way or another, and it's two hundred and seventy units versus three hundred and seventy units, we're talking about sixty new cars versus not, right? So I feel like we need to put a pin in this and really do, do more of a deep dive in this because there's, there's way more things to consider than whether the folks that are trying to, uh, make this move forward right now, right now. Uh, they've all done their research, they're all very good at sales. I'm also good at sales. Um, but we need to really do more of a deep dive in all the rumble, you know, all the, uh, things that are going to come out of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Tom Verna? Thank you, Tom. Mike Willard? Thank you, Mike. And then, uh, Reverend Floyd Narcisse?
Good morning. I'm sorry, good evening. My name is the Reverend Floyd Narcisse. I came to here this morning, this evening first to say thank you to this wonderful council for coming to my church in February for our Black History Program. We had a wonderful time. I really enjoyed you all, and I just want to say, I was not going to say anything, but when it comes to this project, the developers are going to do whatever they want to do when it comes to July, point blank. The law isn't a law, but we have to understand this. Just because it's affordable housing does not mean that people are going to do drugs. I'm very upset when a man said that because rich people do drugs more than poor people because they got money to pay for the drugs. So we got to be careful how we talk and how we say because it's affordable housing. Just because you got a little bit more money than the next person does not mean the person's going to be drugs. Everyone needs an opportunity to live because in twenty twenty-three, a lot of people do not have housing. Felicia County is one of the counties that's, does not have a housing budget for people who need housing. Orange County has it, Seminole County has it, but Volusia County does not. So we have to be mindful because we live in Omen. Omen is the beautiful, beautiful city. It's the best city, I believe, in the state of Florida because I love Omen Beach. But we have to be careful, people, of how we treat people and how we do things, and make sure we do it out of love. I want everyone to know that I love everybody, no matter what race you are, uh, no matter how much money you have. If you don't have any money, we have to treat people and understand that everyone is dealing with something. Be blessed that you have a home. Be happy that someone has to come into our city and be a blessing. Yes, they're going to make some money, but we all want to make some money. But let's make sure that we're doing this for the benefit of our city, our city, not just the wrong street, our city. Now, I agree, this traffic is ridiculous, and stuff we've got to do with the traffic. But if this developer is trying to come into our city to make better homes for people who do not have homes, let's give them an opportunity, but let's make sure we do it out of love and understand that somebody does not have a home. Somebody can't afford your five hundred thousand dollar house. Let's give an opportunity to people who can change and have a beautiful life in Omen because Omen is a beautiful place. Let's give an opportunity to people to have a beautiful home in a beautiful city. Now, I agree, apartments will bring down my property value. I don't want my property value to go down. But let's make sure that we do this out of love. Build homes for people who need homes and understand that they're here to make a better community for us. Thank you for your time and have a blessed and wonderful week.
Thank you, Reverend. All right, Commission, back to us. Does someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm not going to make a motion at this point. I just would like to throw out that, you know, given the information tonight, and I think, you know, there is some, I don't think everybody in the audience understands the new law that was signed into, to law by Governor DeSantis. Um, and I don't like to belabor any, anything. This has been dragged out for so long, but I'd almost like to see staff investigate what this new law could bring to this type of project. And so we kind of all are presented the same facts, and we can see which pro- you know, what, what could out, what could happen versus what's being proposed.
Is that a motion?
My motion that would be to table this, uh, and have staff bring it back comparing this project to what could happen with the Live Local Act.
I'd like to second that.
Move and second it. Now, Randy, let us know if that's even possible.
Come on, Randy.
Yes, you can do whatever you wish. So, on, um, item seven R, seven Q on your consent agenda. It's a memorandum that kind of summarizes the, the, the new law. Um, of course, you know, you've got a lot of stuff on your agenda, so it's kind of hard to get through all of this. Um, you know, you could choose to table that if you wish and study the material on the agenda on the new law and the effects of the new law. I think my understanding from the planning director's previous comments was he can give you some generalities and the maximum ranges he thinks might be available, but without knowing details, it's going to be difficult for him to kind of pinpoint things. So, um, you know, if you're looking for certainty, it's going to be difficult to do. He doesn't get a vote. I don't get a vote. Um, all we can do is to, um, make you aware, uh, of, uh, some additional factors that you need to take into consideration. Um, nobody knows, you know, if you deny the project, what might happen. Um, and if that's the course of action that you wish to take, then we'll just wait and see what happens. But in terms of if you would rather table it, um, that's an option that you have. Um, I don't know if the applicant has a preference as to whether you vote it up or vote it down, or... or whether he's amenable to, um, a motion to table. You might, um, ask what the applicant wishes to do. Um, but in the end, it's your decision, procedural. And then who pays? I mean, is any more advertising required if we do, uh?
Yes.
And who pays for that? If we're the ones continuing it, does the city pay for that? What are those costs?
Well, it should be, it should be the applicant, uh, but it, it would have to be re-advertized.
And so we've got May second, May sixteenth, and June, uh, sixth as the next three available commission dates before July first. Did you have a specific date in mind, Deputy Mayor Bryley?
Mr. Mayor, this being, I don't know how long it would take staff to, to do something like that. I, I, because I'd be looking at, you know, and, and, and to, to Mr. Hayes' remarks, yes, I, I, I saw that in, in the, in the consent agenda where it discusses that, but it, I don't think, there's a lot of questions out here among the audience and I think it would probably, you know, I think it better serves them if they're hearing it. And again, are they facts? Well, the law is a fact, but if staff could bring us back kinda like a, I'm not saying a worst-case scenario, but I mean, give us some sort of idea of what we could be looking at with this new law versus approving what they're asking for.
So I, I just wanna be clear. So that, that, uh, this disposition item gives kind of what we know of, of the Live Local Act. So we can try to expand on that a little more. We're not gonna be able to give you the potential number of units. We, we don't have the ability to draw the, the plan set to, to give you a reasonable, a, and I hesitate to give you a number at all because I don't have any data analysis to support that number. We could ask the applicant if they're willing to do that, that's fine, but, you know, I just wanna be, I wanna give the commission what you're looking for in this delay. So I can, I can take that, that disposition item and, and give you some more site-specific, but there's really not a whole lot more I'm gonna be able to do, um, with, with that.
Commissioner Tolland.
Does the applicant, uh, did you do any research on this? Do you already have some of those numbers? Because I think I read some of that somewhere.
Yeah, let me, let me ask Harry Newkirk, the project engineer, to address that.
Thank you.
Harry Newkirk, Newkirk Engineering, twelve thirty North US Highway One, Ormond Beach. So we have, uh, the architects worked on some footprints and we got a layout of the site and right now we have two hundred and seventy units, but before the two seventy, we had three hundred units and had parking working on the site. With the Live Local, we would park underneath every single building. So you can see that we're gonna have, uh, just by looking at the plan right now, we're gonna have a lot more parking underneath these buildings, connecting buildings together almost like what you do on beachside with condominiums to create a, a massive parking field underneath the structures to gain. And I, right now, the current layout was over four hundred, I believe it was four seventy. Um, would that be the end number? It'd probably reduce a little due to columns and stuff underneath the structures that were not totally designed at this moment, but it's definitely be over four hundred units that would go in on the Live Local plan. And the stormwater system can be resigned. We don't have to have a wet detention pond. Um, we could be all underground retention as, and all underground retention is the best stormwater to have, period, because it removes the most nitrous and phosphorus. So that big open area, wouldn't need to have that, so it could be a combination of a different type of building, even from what we see here, um, to something more, it could even be like Regal. Regal's huge buildings to get the, a mass amount of units. So that's gonna be easily attainable, maybe even go with five hundred if we ta, change the entire concept. So you're definitely gonna see four hundred-plus units with Live Local.
And you think that's good for our community?
I, I would not say that that, I, I, so I would say it is good for the community for that type of housing as, uh, having more housing that's affordable. Um, I live in a house that's over a million. Um, there's, everyone behind this development's in seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar houses. That's not normal. The, uh, average pay for your police officers and that, they can't afford these houses. So the multifamily needs to come down in value. It's two, it's twenty-five hundred.
I'm not disputing affordable housing. I think we all agree workforce needs housing. I'm, I'm disputing traffic.
Okay. So let me, let me explain one thing about the traffic on the site. So when I look at traffic, and we always look at, um, say that right now, three hundred units, we get amount of traffic, and then I look at B-eight zoning and super target and say, you know what? That was a great plan probably ten, well, or fifteen years ago. Good idea, would've changed the entire landscape on the west side, um, in my opinion, because I lived out in this area. It would have two and a half times the traffic if we zone, if we go B-eight. So when we come in with multifamily that's less than the maximum what Stephen Spraker's talking about, building a shopping center, I think it's a good thing. And then we looked at DOT, right? And we worked with DOT for almost two years on this project. And, you know, they weren't totally excited about the driveways set up out here, but what they, they looked at is how can we make it safer? So we shifted the Walgreens driveway eighty-eight feet. That's a big deal because it's so close to Timber Creek. And when we did that, no one here in the public, no one, no one likes this answer. U-turns. We all hate doing U-turns, but the DOT loves it because it's the safest maneuver. It saves more lives. There's less fatalities. That's why you're gonna see this all over the city, all over the state of Florida, closing medians and creating U-turn movements because traffic signal, they, when you brought it, say you put a traffic signal in, they already pinmark five fatalities. That's five. So if, if they know there's not even five fatalities at the intersection, they're not gonna suggest putting a signal in because there's only gonna be five fatalities. So U-turns are even less and it, they're not really looking at it for, um, accidents. There's gonna be accidents. They're looking about how bad the accidents are. So that's why you see U-turns. No one likes them, um, from a public standpoint, but safety-wise, that's, that's here to stay. Um, Timber Creek, so this project also does improvements on Timber Creek. We are adding a right turn lane for Walgreens that's not there. We're extending the dual glass another hundred feet so we can get another twenty, twenty-five cars in there. And that will help the amount of cars that are stacking so people can still go straight and take rights. So those improvements are happening on this project through, uh, Volusia County.
Yeah, I mean, just with, with regard to traffic in particular, um, one of the things that, you know, again, we're dealing with a change that's sort of occurring in real time, you know, with the new law, just like you are. Um, it went into, it was signed two and a half weeks ago. Um, what it doesn't do, it doesn't create exemptions for things like concurrency, doesn't create exemptions for things like traffic. Um, so we still have to meet those tests and, you know, to the extent that that's been raised here this evening, I wanna make sure that's clear, that, those tests, the tests for concurrency, schools, you know, uh, traffic, water, sewer utilities, things of that nature, all stay in place. The issue I want you to consider though, as you're looking at that, is that we meet them. Um, you know, as we, as we've gone through the analysis here now, we meet those standards. We don't set them, but we meet the standards that are there now. Um, the question of what's good to, for the community, um, yeah, I think several people have said, you guys get to make that decision here tonight, right? But one of the things we said, you know, at one of the prior hearings on this was ten years ago, you adopted into your comprehensive plan this concept for this area that said, we do need to provide for diversified housing, this is the area to do it. Um, and you gave a range of density. Um, those are the things that you had control overdoing. If we need to spend some time looking at that, you, you've given us time to, you know, to talk to the, the neighbors and to try and come up with, with, you know, the understandings that we have, and we appreciated that. Um, you know, if that's something that, that you need to be able to fully understand it, again, we're dealing with this new law in, in real time as well. We have no problem with that. We would like to get to an answer sooner rather than later so we can decide which way to move forward. That's the, that's our one request.
Thank you, Mark. And Commissioner Persis?
Yes, um, Mark, let me just ask you.
Yep.
This, this is really tough because, you, you know, we as commissioners have to make decisions, you know, on the, for what's best for the city. Safety is huge. You know, that's one of my biggest, biggest issues is safety. And to me, this is not a safe, this traffic problem is not safe at all. And I, I have to disagree with U-turns being safe. I live on, I have to pull out on Hidden Hills every day when I leave and I have to do a U-turn if I wanna head east on Granada. Well, it is not, not easy. The traffic is so bad, you can't get out. People, there's a little, um, a left turn lane to go to Hidden Hills. People are, get so frustrated, they drive in that illegally in turn. I'm sure there's been lots of tickets because people do that. Yeah, I know. It, it is, it is bad. It's dangerous and that causes people that are rushing late, they're in a hurry, they wouldn't, you know, I'm just gonna do that real quick. I just, I have, I have a ser, I don't care if it's, you know, I would prefer to see single-family homes there. That would be the one thing I would love to see there. But if that's not gonna happen, I can't, I don't know that I can vote yes for something that's gonna cause harm, potential harm to people. I think it is not, I, I just, it's not safe. I don't see anything
Yeah.
... safe about it at all.
A, a, and I will agree with you that, that I think the best configuration for a project like this, just having done, I got my notification from LinkedIn, I've been with Walcop Coal for twenty-four years as of last weekend, so I've been doing this for a little while here in the community and, um, you know, I think the best configuration is one that provides multiple connection points. And I think the best configuration, when you talk to traffic engineers, is the one where you have a connection to Timber Creek, you have a connection to, to forty, you provide those alternatives. And I know at the peak hours, there are times that, you know, that, absolutely, that intersection like a lot of them around, you know, Volusia County in general backs up quite a bit. Um, when you're dealing with zoning, though, um, you know, the traffic and how we analyze it and how we regulate it and who's in control of it, even with regard to Timber Creek being a county road, those are technical standards. Um, so we, zoning doesn't exempt us from having to meet those standards. And so, you know, we're, we're not here asking to, to create any, any exemption from either DOT standards or the county standards or the city standards with regard to how we connect to the road network and what improvements were required to, um, to provide. In fact, as I said a minute ago, the, the new legislation keeps those standards in place. It doesn't exempt, like it does with density or height, it doesn't exempt your traffic standards. We still have to comply with those. What we're standing here is, you know, the, the access configuration presented has been approved by the permitting agencies that are involved right now, and it does meet the technical standard. Doesn't mean that I think it's the best way to do it. Um, I certainly agree with you. I think, you know, personally, there ought to be probably some more improvements on the road and there probably ought to be some more connection points to Timber Creek. The problem is, and, and this has been a change over the past ten years with the legislative process, the background conditions that exist can't be, be left to the last developer in to fix. And that's what we have in our system. We have a lot of background deficiencies that the legislature has said, you can't make the new guy pay for them. You've gotta come up with a strategy on your own to pay for them. Um, we charge impact fees, you know, the things that have been raised here tonight about, you know, the impacts to police and fire and medical and everything else, we charge impact fees for all of those things, for the, for the new guy to, to pay moving forward. And when those are insufficient to pay for the impacts, then those get raised, although the legislatures also put caps on how much you can raise them and, and what your, what your, you know, restrictions are there. Um, we're happy to sit with you and, and get our, our arms with, you know, around this new, you know, kinda law that we find ourselves dealing with. We think, and, and I think what Garrison has committed to in, in our conversations with his company is to try and bring the best project forward. Um, you know, the one that has the best, you know, fit and finish that is consistent with what, you know, his company typically does, which is not typically affordable housing. But, um, and we, we have no problem complying with the traffic safety laws and everything else that, that you have. Um, you know, we're just, we find ourselves in kind of a, a point where the, the, you know, the foundation that we're standing on is shifting a little bit and, um, and so we're just trying to work through it like you are.
And so, Mark, I heard you say there's no objection necessarily to a continuance.
You stopped listening after that?
No, I, I, I'm still listening. I mean, I heard Commissioner Persis say she's all
You're absolutely correct. We, we're, we're happy to
She's all about safety. Well, at two seventy, you're gonna be safer than at four hundred.
That's fair.
And her no, her no vote may result in a four hundred, and that's what we're worried about.
And we're, we're fine with, with taking that additional time to understand it.
Deputy Mayor Bryley, uh, did you wanna push it to the June sixth meeting so they have as much time as possible before July first?
You're I think we're probably pushing a little bit further, but too far, maybe, maybe the eighteenth of May. Sixteenth, I'm sorry, sixteenth of May.
Sixteenth of May.
Okay, it is the sixteenth. Who made, that's included in your motion? Who made the second? Was that you, Commissioner?
Lloyd Tolland.
Or Lloyd? Are you, are you okay with the sixteenth?
Sure.
All right. So let's call the vote. And that's, uh, Deputy Mayor, that's for eight A and B?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Commissioner Tolland, you're
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, and I will ask, uh, staff to put something on the website. I, I don't think this continuance is as much about us understanding it. Obviously, we've been briefed on SB one oh two, we saw it coming, uh, we followed it in the legislature, um, we had the briefings, it's in, it's in the packet. I think it's more about educating the public and then getting more details both from the applicant and staff on the, uh, impacts, even though it's pretty clear what's been said tonight, but, uh, so yeah, if we can push some stuff out on social media, I know the paper is gonna cover it and, uh, we'll go, go from there. Very good. Thank you, everyone, uh, for your comments and work on that tonight. Uh, now we go to eight C.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I thought we did.
Ordinance
Actually, Susan, I apologize.
No problem.
Uh, and I should've done this earlier. Let's take a, uh, three-minute break. Rest room. Uh, we're on eight C and Madam Clerk, if you would, read eight C by title only.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-one. An ordinance annexing one parcel of real property into the city of Ormond Beach. Said property located at one seven five five North US Highway One. Volusia County parcel number three one two six dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero one five zero. Setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone One of the city of Ormond Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-one read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this.
Good evening, Stephen Spraker, planning director. This is a request for annexation at seventeen fifty-five North US Highway One. It is in our interlocal service boundary agreement. In the staff report, they gave the reasons why we support the annexation. The applicant is also here if there's any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Yep, Richard Hardy's here if there's any questions for him. Commission, I don't have any other cards.
I'd like to move that we accept ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight D.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two. An ordinance amending paragraph C official zoning map of section two dash zero one established of Article One, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of chapter two, district and general regulations of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone one parcel of real property totaling twenty-six plus or minus acres located at four seven five North Timber Creek Road, Volusia County parcel number four one one three dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero three two from planned residential development, P R D, to suburban residential, S R, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-two read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, and I'll ask planning director Stephen Spraker to speak on this as well.
This parcel of land, uh, at one time had a development order through a planned residential development for eighty foot by a hundred and ten foot wide lots. Um, still has the planned residential development zoning, but it doesn't have a development order. So the contract purchaser is seeking to go back to the original zoning, which is suburban residential, requires a minimum of one acre lots. Um, they've shown a conceptual plan with one, one to two, two acre lots, so they're not seeking to go through the planned development. They need a zoning and that's why they're going to the suburban residential. Staff is recommending approval. Staff is recommending approval and the planning board also recommended approval. The applicant's here if there are any questions.
It was unanimous planning board.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, and yep, Randy Kudak from Zev Cohen's here to answer any questions. I don't have any other cards, Commissioner.
Move approval.
Seconded. Seconded. Any further discussion? Please, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight E.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending chapter one, general administration, Article four, schedule of development review and impact fees, section one dash twenty-seven, impact fees of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by updating the provision of impact fee credits, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-three read by title only.
Thank you. And again, we'll go to the Planning Director.
This is a, a land development code amendment based, our impact fee study. Uh, we asked the commission if they wanted to advance the impact fee credits. They responded they did. Um, so this would take away the expiration of impact fees over time. The rest of the impact fee studies should be to you on, uh, May sixteenth. Staff is recommending approval. Planning Board also recommending approval of this item.
Perfect. Thank you. Commission, I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Seconded.
We've been seconded. Any further discussion? I'll just say thanks to staff for getting this back to us so quickly and, uh, please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Persis, I'm sorry. Commissioner Persis. Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we go to eight F.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash eighty-three. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, approving a preliminary plat for the Ormond Gateway, a commercial subdivision of land, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash eighty-three read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I'll ask Planning Director Steve Breaker to speak.
This is an application for a preliminary plat. Um, it is a technical review that subdiv- subdivides land, so they're not asking for any zoning variances or any, um, type of waivers. Um, they originally were approved, um, about a year ago for three lots. Their plans fell through, uh, with one of the lots, so now they're proposing eight lots. They could, um, in time, combine the lots, but it's a lot easier to combine a lot than subdivide a lot, which is why they're going to eight lots. Um, staff is recommending approval and the planning board also recommended approval.
Thank you, Steven. Any questions for Steven?
Mr. Mayor, I have approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eighty-three.
I just have a comment I'd like to make about it, if I may.
Is there a second? Let me get a second.
Second. I'm sorry.
End comment. Commissioner Talland?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Um, I just, I'm just, would like to ask the applicant and when you're, when they're doing the, the plating, if they would consider respecting, I know there's a lot of wetlands on that property, if they would consider that when they do do a development code and also can, uh, consider maybe using some more native plant material in their planning.
Yes. Thank you. And, um, any other comments? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. We will close the public hearings and go to nine A. Sean Finley, Public Works Director, is up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Very quickly, we're gonna, I just wanna go through a couple of things here with Andy Ramon Beach from Park. Just giving you an update on where we're at with that and we'll try and get you through it real quickly here. Um, as you know, uh, we had damage with Hurricane Nicole. Um, the, the north corner of the seawall received some damage. Um, we also, during the hurricanes, had damage to those, those wooden, the wooden ramp, the handicap ramp that's in the middle of the park. Um, so those are the two big things we have. What we're looking at doing here is we've had a lot of history with the, with the, with that ramp. Um, and so we're looking at a different option than the wooden ramp that we have now. And this is not necessarily exactly indicative. This is a ramp that's at University of Florida, so we probably wouldn't have the red brick, but, but something along this lines where we have a concrete ramp with switchback to get people down there that's a little bit more durable than that wooden ramp. Um, we're gonna replace it, we're gonna replace the stairs in the same locations, those blue stars that you see, the middle one's actually where the handicap ramp is. Where you see the green star is where we would put the handicap ramp. That's very close to where the handicap part, parking spaces are, gives us a chance to create that durable, little bit more resilient to the, to storms and, and, and so we're not gonna replace it as often as we have. We've, um, we've replaced that ramp four, I think, four ti- three, three times since it was originally constructed. It's getting to be, it's time to do a different look at it and come up with a better mousetrap for this one here. The seawall, um, we had our consultant Zev Cohen Associates and a structural engineer take a look at the seawall. The seawall was originally constructed in nineteen fifties. It met the code at that time. Um, but codes have changed a- and, and there's been wear and tear on it over the past sixty to seventy years. So it's damaged beyond what's repairable. Um, it does not meet current code requirements. Um, so neat, new seawall is necessary to be constructed permitted. What we're looking at is a cantilever type wall, and I think that we've talked about some different wall types. There is the, the traditional type with the tiebacks that would, that would go back into the park. That would require a lot more impact to the, to the, the, the top level of the park itself, requires to close more of the park during construction and require a lot more restoration type costs. Cantilever's a little bit more expensive as a wall to construct, but when you factor in the, the restoration, it's about a wash. Um, this, this one is our recommendation we're, we're gonna go with because of minimal impact to park facilities. We're thinking that we can keep the park mostly open with very little exception during the park construction. Um, there would be a little bit of restoration along that wall, the wall area itself, but very little restoration that's gonna be required. Um, here's our project timeline. We're looking to come back to you next month with an RFP for, to, to select design consultant. We have to do an RFP because to get fully reimbursed, we can't go with one of our already selected, uh, continuing consultants. That puts a little bit of a timeline for us. We'll receive those, those responses in June, award a contract hopefully in July, begin design right away. We're looking to, to get that, that design complete in October and get it out to bid right away in October. November to May is our big key and that's what we're shooting for here, that time that's not turtle nesting season. We're in turtle nesting season now. We can't do any construction until November as it is, so we wanna be ready to hit the ground running November, December, so we, that way we're completed with construction by this time next year and get us, get us back to business. Um, and so we're moving forward with that unless, unless other orders directed, but just wanted to give you an update on where we are, where we're heading and let you know that it's, it's something that's very much in the forefront of our, of our, of our thoughts. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So will the park be open, fully open for summer?
It's, it is fully open right now. Um, we just don't have that, that ramp access downtown there. So what we've been doing, we've, we've got signs that direct people to the, to the, the, the ramp there, um, to the north side of, of park. So the, the park facilities, there's just a little bit that, that we can't use, um, on that north end of it, and I think that that affects the playground. But other than that, the park, the, the bathrooms, the pavilions for the most part are, are available for people to work. The parking lot is fully available, so, so we're, we're keeping it as open as we can for as long as we can, and that's part of the, the game plan here as well.
Any other questions? Thank you for that update, Steven.
Thank you.
All right. We go to reports, suggestions and requests, and we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Um, your next workshop is scheduled for June sixth. That's, um, the topic is your draft budget and CIP. Um, so, uh, mark that on your calendars. Uh, a reminder that in two thousand twenty-three, uh, next May, May eighth through the fourteenth is the, uh, Police Unity Tour. We have, uh, three officers, um, participating, Chief Godfrey, uh, Corporal Summerville and Officer Raphael Medina. And, uh, so we're excited about that. I know several of you will be going to DC to welcome them back and to, um, the memorial is really quite an honor to see, that law enforcement memorial, and I know the, the chief and staff really appreciate you supporting them in that way. Um, the Granada Streetscape Sidewalk Banding Project is being started. The contractor has sourced some shell and decorative banding and he'll be installing a sample, uh, part of that, uh, that banding so that you all can see it before it goes live, you know, 'cause sometimes things look different in pictures than they do in real life. They're gonna put that on Washington Street like they have in the past, and when that's ready, we'll let you know. You can go take a look at it and then we can evaluate, uh, whether or not you think that's appropriate. Um, the project will begin west of US one and progress towards the beach with an estimated work period of approximately nine months. And staff will coordinate well with, um, the, uh, main street and the businesses in that corridor so that they're well informed of when we'll be working in front of their area. Annual Earth Day Celebration is this weekend, um, at the Environmental Discovery Center on Saturday, the twenty-second. Uh, we'll have an annual tree giveaway that starts at nine AM. I think they have oak, maple and cypress. I'm not sure what the last one is. Uh, that's, and so you need to know what your yard is like. If it's a wet yard, you need to put a cypress in there and it'll grow tall. Um, I had a, I picked up an oak, oak a couple of years ago. It's a little lanky, but it's, it's getting there, so I'm excited about that. Uh, they'll have, um, nature walks, vendor exhibits and classes, and it's a great time for children and hopefully it'll be a, a nice weekend. Swing into Spring Concert Series starts with the casements on Thursday, April twentieth at six thirty to eight thirty. And the performing arts construction begins on, um, Monday, April twenty-fourth, so we're really excited about that and what's happening there. And then Art in the Park is May sixth, so we have, that's another big, uh, festival at, um, Rockefeller Gardens. That's probably our last festival for the season before the summer hot weather starts. And it was a great time at the, uh, Celtic Festival over the weekend. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or if there's any direction you need to do.
Any questions for the City Manager? Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you very much.
Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
On the sidewalk banding, I think you can go look at that anytime after Friday, correct, Alex? Yes. So after Friday, if you wanna walk over there and take a look and have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Hey, Mayor. Just one, uh, quick update on, uh, the Hunter's Ridge, uh, issues that we've been, uh, working on for about, about two years now. So, um, we, uh, I, I may have shared some information with you in the past about, uh, some compliance issues that we're having with the developer, the developers. It's the same corporate entity, but a couple of different, uh, new owners now. Um, one issue we're having is with the, uh, conveyance of some conservation lands that are required under the Ormond Beach DRI to have been conveyed to the city, um, in fee simple without any encumbrances. And, um, for a little bit of history, um, the, there are two, two DRIs that were issued by the state of Florida back in nineteen ninety-one, I think it was, uh, one for Flagler County, one for Ormond Beach. And the reason why they're two DRIs is because two different jurisdictions, two, two different governing bodies. The DRIs in large part mirrored each other at one point, not so much now. Ormond Beach DRI is mostly built out, not completely. Um, the city of Flagler County, you may recall, entered into an interlocal agreement back in twenty sixteen, seventeen, um, where Ormond was gonna provide the water to the Flagler County portion so it could develop out. So we've been doing that and the developers have been developing portions of Hunter's Ridge and Flagler County in, in little different, different phases. Um, a, a couple of years ago, we began looking at, um, possibility of, of getting an easement for Flagler County for location of some additional wells, water wells, if you will, to serve the, the development up there. Um, and at the time, uh, the developer came to the city and said, well, listen, um, uh, if we withdrew our, our request to Flagler County, uh, they had some land in Ormond Beach that they would, uh, consider granting an easement to the city. So we began looking at that. And what we discovered under the Ormond Beach DRI is, is that they were supposed to convey the fee simple ownership to the city, uh, back in nineteen ninety-one. That never occurred. And so we've been going around in circles with them on that issue. There's some other issues, um, kind of, um, connected to that. And another recent issue that we learned is that the developer granted to Flagler County a sixty-foot wide public road easement through, uh, starts out in Flagler County, but it comes through land situated in Ormond Beach to a connecting point off of State Road forty. So that's a bit of a problem. We've not been able to resolve that with Flagler County nor the developer. Uh, we're gonna put them on a short leash, I think, in terms of performance. I don't expect we're gonna get that resolved. And if we don't, then what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna put the, the developer on a notice of intent to find them in noncompliance, noncompliance with the Ormond Beach DRI. Um, that'll result in a hearing here. If this mission upholds that determination, then under the DRI statute, what will happen is we will suspend the provision of all services, water service, inspection service, until that issue gets resolved. I think that's the only way we're gonna get the attention of the developer and Flagler County to fix the problem. So that's the latest update on that. I just wanted to share that with you. Uh, and, uh, if we can get it resolved, fine. If we don't, then, um, you know, we'll be providing more information to you. So, thank you.
Thank you for that update, Randy. Any questions for Randy? And tonight, we start with Commissioner Sargent.
Keep it brief, it's late. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, over the last few weeks, once I've had, uh, several calls regarding, um, people wanting to drive golf carts on the road. Several of our surrounding cities, um, use a process where the city charges an inspection fee, permit fee, um, once a year, once every couple of years. Um, and then the golf cart can be operated on any road that's thirty-five miles an hour below. You can cross roads that are forty-five and above. All the same laws apply that, um, with driving a car, you must be sixteen years old, older, um, must have valid driver's license and all the safety equipment is required. Just didn't know if, um, anyone would be interested in seeing if the city would be, um, interested in entertaining, moving forward on this. And I've, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'll let each Commissioner respond to that in their closing comments. Commissioner Persis?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Boy, there's been a lot going on since our last meeting. Um, uh, the whole commission went to, um, Washington DC. We had a great time there. We had a tour of the Capitol. we went to Satuary Hall and saw the Mary McCloud-Bethune statue right there. Boy, does that statue stand out among all the others, especially with that black rose against the, the white marble, it's really, it's really beautiful. We got to meet with Representative Michael Waltz, and it's wonderful to know he's very supportive of Ormond Beach and all of us here. Then the next week, we all went to Tallahassee for Florida League of Cities Action Days. We, we met with Doug Bell, who is our lobbyist for, for the city, and he got us in to see Tom Wright, our Senator, and again, Tom Wright, you know, is very supportive of us and, and really cares about Ormond Beach. And we got to see Tom Lake himself on the floor in action, and he was nice enough to introduce us all, um, when we were all up in the, I guess, in the balcony area, so it was very great trips, both of them. I also attended the Celtic Festival this past weekend, got sunburned, it was beautiful day, but it was wonderful. It was bigger than ever, I couldn't believe the number of people that attended this, this year. The weather was great, and vendors, food, um, something for everyone to do, so it was really great. I was just, I'm just really proud of Ormond Main Street for putting that together. And I just had to mention, um, mention, because we haven't met in a while. I just wanna thank Paul Hall of, you know, he donated three, thirty thousand dollars annually for twenty years to the Police Athletic League that supports our power program, and I just wanna thank Paul, you know, for his commitment to our youth and to our city. And, um, that's all I have for my comments, and, and Commissioner Sargent, um, you're, I, I would like, I would be interested in looking into it, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, good evening.
Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, in the interest of time to keep it brief, I, I will, uh, echo a lot of Commissioner Persis's comments. We did have a, a, a welcome reception in, in DC with, with Congressman Waltz. He is, uh, he's attuned to a lot of our, our legislative needs from Washington that we, that we need here in Ormond Beach. Uh, I think he'll, I think he'll work on those, uh, the following week or week and a half when we were in Tallahassee. We've been looked upon favorably in the House for funding for a lot of our projects, it's, it's now kind of, and, and we were in the process of trying to get things through the Senate, I think they kind of funded one of our, our projects or preliminarily. And, uh, so in any case, I think we were looked upon very well at both places. To Commissioner, to Commissioner Sargent's question on the golf carts, um, I think we should, or we could look at that. Um, I do think the county sometime back passed an ordinance, there were twenty-five, thirty, twenty-five or thirty and below was where they allowed them, um, on their, on their roads. But we have to, we have to, we have to, uh, you know, I know they have particular rules on their roads, so I know that this county roads that go to the city, we have to keep, you know, keep them in mind, but, uh, I do think it's worth looking at, thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Tolland.
Saving the best for last, I see. I just wanna thank, um, the city for, for allowing us as commissioners the opportunity to go to DC and to tally. I concur with everything that was said, I, I, it's, it's, it's a, it's a fun event, it's a learning event. Our brains come back full of ideas, and I guess that's the whole purpose of it, as well as pushing our priority list to our legislators. I do, um, wanna thank, uh, congratulate Sean Finley for securing funds for some of our water projects and staff. You know, that's, that's a big, big, good, big project for us, and I'm really appreciative of that. And I hope that, um, when we do set those priorities, we do look at that Ormond Lakes area and that US one water shed that we're always discussing in Planning Board and, and on the Commission. I'm also pleased that Volusia County voted yes to a pilot program to regrow the loop. I noticed one of the residents did mention that, and, um, I think that was first brought up to our attention by Alan Burton when he came and spoke in, in front of us a few months ago. And it's a hope of mine that the City of Ormond Beach will collaborate, um, with this project within the county. And as, as usual, I have two questions, one will be to Joyce, and it's asking you if we've investigated or any of that Safe Roads Initiative that we talked about. Not yet, okay, thank you. And also if the Commission has a desire, I'm wondering if, if you all would be interested in looking at some of the landscape ordinances to try to increase our percentage of plant material, um, for native plants. They, it is sustainable, it's environmentally friendly to water conservation, and it's just looking at the future, um, for our environment. Decreases chemicals, cost effectiveness, et cetera, et cetera. And the only other, so you would have to ask that question, um, Mayor, if we can look at that. And the other is, we got the letter from the Leisure Services Composition, are we doing anything with that? Is that something that you all are gonna be coming back to us with? Okay, all right, so that's the end, thank you, good night.
Commissioner, did anybody wanna, uh, tackle plants? Perhaps staff come back to us?
It's my passion, I'm gonna keep asking until you guys say yes.
On plants?
I'm for it, I'm for it. They have staff look at it, bring us back up, they could bring us a list of native plants that are.
Thank you, and Commissioner Tolland, did you mention on, uh, golf carts?
Yes, I agree that golf carts should be investigated, so thank you.
So we're unanimous on golf carts and plants, of course.
I do agree.
And I'll be quick, thank you, Commissioner, for that. The opioid abatement task force met last Monday and, uh, approved an alternate, uh, to their system of meetings so that each member there participating would have a backup. Commissioner Tolland did attend that meeting, I know she's very interested in that topic, and so I just wanted to mention that. We can talk about it amongst ourselves, but at some point, it'll be coming back to us, the amended agreement that allows for an alternate. And so I wanted the Commission just to have that on their radar, if at all possible. And let you know, there is somebody who said, who did not say not it, and said the opposite, that she's actually interested in that, so.
I am interested.
Keep that, yep, keep that in mind.
For the record, I am interested.
Thank you, and then the, uh, you all covered everything very well. The last thing I was gonna ask for from the Commission was, uh, that we have staff write and me sign a letter to the Volusia County School Board, uh, requesting that they allow Narcan in schools. Right now, it's not allowed, and it's, uh, issue, I guess, with the county, uh, School Board Attorney's Office. They think that there's a liability issue. The sheriff, Mike Chitwood disagrees, uh, there was a presentation from his school's deputy at the opioid abatement task force, and that group has agreed to write a letter urging the school board immediately to approve the use of Narcan in schools, trying to make this happen before a child dies of an overdose, uh, accidental or otherwise. The sheriff indicated that the Good Samaritan laws are in place, the governor expanded those Good Samaritan laws to protect schools and anybody who would administer the Narcan. He also explained that Narcan is a drug that's available over the counter, uh, it's safer or as safe as Tylenol, and that at a minimum, it should be provided to the SROs and guardians who are in the schools, and possibly the principals and school nurses, uh, so that it was at least right there and didn't have to be dispatched there, while crucial minutes expired, while somebody's dying of a, of an overdose. And the problem is particularly difficult with fentanyl because it's so powerful. An officer who comes in, a grown officer who comes into contact with it can be overcome, uh, and overdosed just by touching it. So you can imagine the effect it would have on a child, school child. And we had a incident, what makes it so severe to me is we had an incident in an Ormond Beach school where a parent, uh, dropped fentanyl on the ground unknowingly to herself, and, uh, then luckily, just so happened, the school administrator was there, picked it up using a baggie so she didn't touch it or get, uh, overdosed by it, and was able to call the police and, and have all the appropriate actions taken. But seeing that that right there could have been a death, it just made it that much more urgent that we do something. And so, uh, I can get a copy that the county attorney's writing for the opioid abatement task force. I know staff can do that just as easily as I can, and would ask our staff to write a letter, uh, along those lines. And I'm happy to sign it, I don't know if we want the whole Commission to sign it or just have me sign it, but if the whole Commission would be willing to sign it, I think it would be, uh, urging. I mean, I think this is coming, I've talked to some school board members, uh, but we're just asking that it be done immediately, not in September or, or later, because it is such a threat, so. Do you need any other direction on that, Joyce and Randy?
Just like you know, if you all sign, we'll bring it back to you.
Okay, I'd rather get it out quicker than that. I don't know if they can't stop by the office, I mean, we're talking about it right now.
Because you have, you have to prove what you're all going to sign. You can sign, e- any one of you can sign it individually, but it constitutes, it would constitute a collective decision for you to review it and sign it outside of a meeting. As trivial as it seems, that's the guardrail that needs to go up, so, you know, we can, here, here's a thought. We can prepare a letter for the mayor to sign, and we can, we can reinforce that with a resolution that we'll bring back to the Commission to approve, and you can all sign out if you'd like to do that, how's that sound?
I think what's most important is we get anything out as quick as possible to get this into work, so if it just takes the mayor to sign it, I, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too, just, just get it out quickly, because, yeah.
Great, all right, we'll do it, we'll do it that way, thank you very much, and, uh, with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want Mr. Thomas to know that you heard that they will have maple trees available at the Earth Day Celebration, so, go get your maple trees.
Very good, and with that, we are adjourned, thank you, Eric.